Full start. Test, test.
Good evening, everyone. We will begin our meeting if you'd all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to remove my mask when I'm speaking and I'll encourage those of you who come to the podium later to do the same and our board members will unmask when they are speaking, when they have an opportunity. So tonight, we have a lot of special recognitions. We have Mike Roth, who's Parkway's Activities and Athletics Director. He'll be here to introduce our state sports champions. Parkway CFO Patty Bedborough will share information about the Energy Star Partner of the Year Award and the Energy Star Building Certifications. We'll also hear from Hannah Carter, who is our Sustainability Coordinator, about this year's Sustainable Schools Challenge winners. Two high school students will be honored from the Princeton Prize in Race Relations. In addition, there are numerous high school students who received state and national speech and debate, yearbook, newspaper, journalism, and broadcast awards. West High's Principal, Dr. Mitchell, will tell us about the 2021 U.S. Presidential Scholar. Finally, Dr. Kevin Beckner will introduce nine students who scored a perfect score on the ACT. So first, I'd like to welcome Mike Roth, our Activities and Athletics Director, to introduce the state sports champions.
On behalf of the Board of Education and Dr. Marty, it is my honor and privilege as the Director of Athletics and Activities for Parkway to introduce our state champions for the 2020-21 school year. This year, we have ten individual state champions, including a couple relays, and two team champions that we will honor.
You want to click for me? You want to click for me?
First, from Parkway West, the boys' swimming, we have Will Bonnet. Will is a junior from Parkway West. Actually, Will was a two-time state champion this year in the 200-yard IM with a time of 1:51.29, and also won the 500-yard freestyle, had the fastest time in the singles area with a time of 4:36.81, outstanding time. Will led them to a third-place finish in Class One. Also, he was on two other relay teams that placed second and fourth. And head coach for the Parkway West Boys Swim Team is Colleen Sumner. Also from Parkway West, senior Korda Morowski. Korda won the 100-yard breaststroke with also an area best time of 57.24. He also placed third in the freestyle and second in two other relays. So congratulations to Korda. Again, head coach is Colleen Sumner. Onto the winter season. Parkway South girls' swimming won a state championship in the 200-yard freestyle relay with a time of 1:36.74, set the school record at Parkway South. And team members include Logan Mohoff, a junior, Mia Muckerman, a sophomore, Elena Hennig, a freshman, and Kylie Sullivan, a sophomore. They also led them to the Class Two fourth-place finish at state. So congratulations to the girls from South. Head coach is Blakely Mathis. Also from Parkway South, Kylie Sullivan, I just mentioned her on the relays. She won two individual state championships in the 200 individual medley with a time of 204.2, and also in the 100-yard butterfly with a time of 55.07, setting a school record. Kylie was outstanding this year. Kylie is also a member of our Parkway Swim Club. So congratulations. Again, head coach is Blakely Mathis. Parkway West girls' swimming also had a state champion. Freshman Nora Radkowski won the 100-yard butterfly with an area best time of 58.09. Congratulations to Nora. Again, only a freshman. Head coach is Colleen Sumner. Also from Parkway West in the winter season, Paige Wermeyer. Paige is only a junior. As you can see, she is a wrestler for us, pretty good wrestler, 23-0, did not lose all season long. In the state championships, she won the title match 10-0. She defeated the number-one ranked wrestler in the semis, coming back to defeat her first female in Parkway School history, not only to place, but to win a state championship in wrestling for the females. So great job by Paige. Head coach is Zeke Allison. One more, please. There we go. And at Parkway Central in the spring season, we had a state champion on the track team in the four-by-200-meter relay. State championships were held at Jeff City this year. Team members include Nina Akpara, Skylie Lee, Jessica Parsons, and Kalen Tate. They had a winning time of 1:41.4. Also helped the team place second at state for Parkway Central. Outstanding performance this year. Head coach is Ryan Banta. And from Parkway North, we had a senior champion, Ramon Logan, probably the toughest race in track. This is a sprint. The problem is, you're not sprinting for 100 meters, you're sprinting the entire way around the track. He had a winning time of 49.56, which is outstanding. Head coach is Jeff Kinney. And on to our team state champions. From Parkway West, the Water Bowl team won a state title with a record of 15-0. They had a very exciting win in the state championship match over Kirkwood, 11-10 to win the state title. Head coach is Charlie Cotelli. They also won a conference championship. And team members include, if you can move forward, please, on the slide, Will Bonnet, Preston Chapman, Praveen Dhammavallapu, Ross Harder, Ian Heathcote, Palmer Jones, Adam Lambert, Jacob Morelli, McKay Morgan, Korda Morowski, Jack Osterhaus, Costa Roddeman, Brandon Rahm, Andrew Razin, Nathan Schoenberg, Alexandra Sayir, Caleb Siegel, Joey Sloan, Jack Stewart, Hayden Tucker, Ryan Wharton, and Raymond Yun. Again, congratulations to the Water Bowl team, Parkway West state champions. And finally, the boys' volleyball team at Parkway West, they had a great year this year, won a state title in boys' volleyball with a record of 23-4, an outstanding record. They actually defeated Webster at Webster in the state final in three sets. They hosted the state tournament, but they're kind of a little bit behind the eight ball on the road, but they did a great job. Head coach is Susan Anderson for the Parkway West Boys Team, and the team members are Matt Cosgrove. Matt was also the state MVP of the tournament and a captain. Connor Dolan, Victor Ginev, Jack Geddy, Mitchell Harms, Chase Hahn, Ethan Jennings, Tigness Kelly, Brady Keel, Adam Lancia, Stuart File, Hudson Ribble, and Sam Smoot. So congratulations to the boys' volleyball team at Parkway West. In closing, not only are we proud of our state champions, but we are proud of them for being great leaders in their schools. Good luck to our seniors next year in college, and we look forward to watching our underclassmen compete next year in Parkway. I also would like to recognize all the parents of our state champions. Thank you for your support and encouragement throughout all the years. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to clarify my remarks on removing a mask. If you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to remove it. We're trying to help our sign language interpreters out by giving them a little bit better audio quality, and they're seeing us on video back there as well. So next, I'd like to welcome Patty Bedborough, our CFO, to tell us about the district's Energy Star Partner of the Year Award and the 23 schools receiving the Energy Star Building Certification.
Thank you so very much. So we are very proud to share that earlier this year, the Parkway School District was recognized as a 2021 Energy Star Partner of the Year. Though this award is annual, the EPA honors organizations that have made outstanding contributions to protecting the environment through superior energy efficiency achievements. Parkway is one of ten school districts nationwide to be recognized this year and the first Missouri school district to receive this award. The award recognizes Parkway's comprehensive approach to energy efficiency and conservation, including capital replacements, retrofits, new construction design, and student and staff engagement. Through the Better Buildings Challenge, Parkway has committed to reduce energy use by 20% by 2025 and surpassed this goal by reaching 25% energy reduction in 2019, a five-year ahead-of-schedule achievement. And this was prior to COVID-19. Since that time, we've committed to 35% energy reduction by 2025, and we are currently on track to meet this goal. I just want to say a special shout-out to Eric Leeters, who is our Director of Sustainability and Purchasing, who leads most of this work, along with Ralph Neese, our Director of Facilities, and James Swingle, our Manager of Planning and Construction, that certainly plan all of our facility improvements. Hannah Carter is our Facility Coordinator. She monitors all of our systems. In addition, just a special thank you to Margaret Davies, who is in the Facilities Department, and she enters every schedule into the system in order to save money. From our Facilities Department, we wanted to shout out to Kurt Hoffman, Frank McCarty, and our HVAC maintenance team for keeping the systems running efficiently. Also, a shout-out to all of our principals and administrators that support the energy savings efforts and education in your buildings. Without your support, this would not have been possible. In addition, goes without saying, but thank you to the Board of Education and our senior leadership for supporting the programs such as the Better Building Challenge and the integration of our ASHRAE 50% Advanced Energy Design Guidelines for all of our new construction and capital replacement projects. In addition, St. Louis County provided us this resolution from the Council in recognition for receiving the Partner of the Year Award. So next up, I have the 2020 Energy Star Building Certificates. So we're excited to share the 22 Parkway buildings achieved the 2020 Energy Star Certification. To be eligible for the Energy Star Certification, a building must earn an Energy Star score of 75 or higher on an EPA 1-100 scale, indicating that it performs better than at least 75% of similar buildings nationwide. The 1-100 Energy Star score is based on actual measured energy use of our buildings. Some of our highlights from our noticeable improvements from our buildings, we want to shout out to Mason Ridge. Their energy use decreased by 26% after the installation of new HVAC units, advanced controls, LED lighting, and new roofing. At South High, the energy use was decreased by 28% since the installation of the geothermal heat pump system, the new chillers that were installed, LED lighting improvement and controls, an additional 75-kilowatt solar energy array, and building envelope ceiling improvements. Central Middle, energy use decreased by 23% with the installation of new HVAC units, energy-efficient heat pumps, advanced controls, LED lighting, and new roofing. So to announce the Energy Star buildings, I have Barrett's Elementary, Belle Reve Elementary, Carmen Trails Elementary, Claymont Elementary, Gregg Elementary, Green Trails Elementary, Piermont Elementary, Riverbend Elementary, Shenandoah Valley Elementary, Ren Hollow Elementary, Central Middle School, Hannah Woods Elementary, Henry Elementary, Highcroft Elementary, Mason Ridge Elementary, McKelvey Elementary, Oak Brook Elementary, Northeast Middle School, South Middle, Southwest Middle School, Fern Ridge High School, and West High School as well. Next up, we have Hannah Carter, that will be introducing our school Sustainability Challenge winners.
Good evening, everyone, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Hannah Carter, and I'm the District Sustainability Coordinator, and I'm so excited to announce this year's winners of the Sustainable Schools Challenge and share some of these schools' achievements from the past year. As a quick overview, the Sustainable Schools Challenge is a program that any student, staff, or family member can participate in by signing up and doing sustainability activities to earn points for their school. This year, we're so excited that over 900 students, staff, and family members have signed up for over 29 schools and submitted over 1,300 activities. Our first-place schools earning the most points in their groups are Sorrento Springs, Green Trails, Hannah Woods, Piermont, Southwest Middle, and South High. This year, Sorrento Springs added race videos and videos to the virtual makerspace. This supports their past amazing creative upcycling projects, such as creating twine from plastic bags to weave mats. Students at Green Trails were busy getting inside, creating nature art, and removing invasive honeycuckoo with their families. And staff created a climate justice interactive digital library. Hannah Woods students continued their micro-recycling program, collecting over 50 pounds of markers this year, and taught their family members about where waste goes and how to recycle. Students at Piermont completed energy scavenger hunts at home with their families to find ways to save energy, and designed recycling sorting machines from upcycled materials. At Southwest Middle, three dozen Missouri native trees and shrubs were planted after years of invasive honeycuckoo removal by students. During annual cleanup, students collected 250 pounds of trash from campus grounds in the nearby creek. Last but certainly not least, South High students collected donations for the Parkway Food Pantry and used Energy Star Home Energy Yardstick tool to calculate their home's energy usage, and created home cleaners with safe household ingredients. I want to thank everyone so much who participated this year and in previous years. You all are truly making a difference, and we're so excited to give you the Sustainable Schools Challenge again in the fall. Thank you.
Okay, how about a big thank you to all of our students, staff, and their families for helping keep our schools so green? Next up, we'll hear from Tori Goldson, a partner at Brian Cave-Layton-Paisner, to tell us about two students who received the Princeton Prize in Race Relations.
Members of the Parkway School Board, my name is Tori Goldson, and I am a member of the National Board of Princeton University's Princeton Prize in Race Relations and the Chair of the Local Selection Committee for the St. Louis Region. Princeton University believes that young people are key to making progress towards racial equity in the United States, and to that end, Princeton University created the Princeton Prize in Race Relations as a national service program with a mission to identify and recognize high-school-age students who significantly engage and challenge their schools or communities to advance racial equity in order to promote respect and understanding among all people. The prize operates in 28 regions nationally. Each region awards one prize, and on occasion, but not every year, we also recognize other high-school students for their accomplishments in the area of race relations with a Certificate of Accomplishment. Last year, we awarded a junior at Parkway Central High School, Farine Khan, the Princeton Prize in Race Relations for her work in founding and leading Students for Progressive Change. Farine was actually honored by the St. Louis County Council, who adopted a formal resolution sponsored by Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway. This year, I'm pleased to announce that another Parkway student is being recognized with a Certificate of Accomplishment, Sri Jalati. And Sri is a senior at Parkway West, whose volunteer work exemplifies the kind of effort that the Princeton Prize is intended to recognize. And he is receiving a Certificate of Accomplishment from Princeton University. Sri founded nano lending three years ago as a social initiative that empowers unhoused individuals through entrepreneurship and helps them launch their own businesses to reach financial stability. And, but these recognitions by Princeton University also remind us that our region and communities still have much work to do to create an inclusive and welcoming place for all our citizens. And these young people are certainly leading the way. And so I encourage the Parkway School Board to continue to listen to its young racial equity activists like Farine and Sri. Their commitment to inclusivity and to create a more equitable world is inspiring, and so please let it inspire you and join us in congratulating Farine and Sri on their accomplishments. The world is a much better place for having them in it.
Next, please welcome via video Erin Crowley, High School Interdisciplinary Curriculum Coordinator, English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Reading, to tell us about the numerous high school students who received state and national speech and debate, yearbook, newspaper, journalism, and broadcast awards.
Good evening, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover, board members. My name is Erin Crowley. I'm the Curriculum Coordinator for High School Language Arts, Social Studies, and Reading Intervention. I am very excited to be with you this evening to celebrate our high-school journalism and speech and debate programs for this year. Central High Journalism Publications Advisor is Christine Stricker. Their yearbook staff took sixth place in the Best of Show for last year's book at the National Scholastic Press Association. The editors are Sydney Kolkar and Zoe Nolting. Alex Meisenhelder won an award from the Missouri Journalism Education Association, Newspaper Design of the Year finalist. Ellie Mueller and Alexis Baumgarten, also from Missouri Journalism Education Association, were finalists in the Broadcast Specials Project for their broadcast on February 25, West High Journalism and Publications, advised by Deborah Clebans, had a phenomenal year as well. Their yearbook from last year was a National Scholastic Press Association Pacemaker Award winner. This is a coveted honor, the highest one that they give. And the Pathfinder Online Newspaper for West High was a finalist for the Pacemaker Award from the National Press Association as well. Editors for the yearbook that year were Carolyn Frisco and Annika Zapata. And for the newspaper, Tyler Kenzie, Catherine McAuliffe, and Fatima Ramani. West High Journalism students also took home national honors from Squill and Scroll. Ula Kaziz, second place in the editorial writing for her piece titled "Activism is Not a Performance, Take Real Action." Zoe DeYoung, second place in news writing for the piece titled "An Inside Look at Teaching During a Pandemic." Tyler Kenzie, also second place for audio podcast titled "COVID-19 and America's Teacher Crisis." Elle Roder and Emily Early took first place in the category of pandemic coverage for their piece "ABCs of COVID," and the entire staff was in the top three of Writing Excellence, which is called the Blue and Gold Award. Central High Speech and Debate Team, coached by Maddie Rudolph, had some awards this year as well. Gaia Benoj took sixth place in State in the category of International Extemporaneous Speaking. And there are two students who are at Nationals this week competing, Annie Gu and Nicole Bee, in the Nationals Public Forum Debate. Wishing those girls well today. South High Speech and Debate, advised by Michael Hackmeister, also had some students qualify for Nationals this year. Ashook Kotamassu qualified in the Student Congress, Caitlin Ying in World Schools Debate, and Jason Zing in Extemporaneous Debate. We loved them as well. We're going to hear from the Advisor, Cara Borges-Miller, at West High about her students.
Good evening. My name is Cara Borges-Miller. I am the Head Speech and Debate Coach at Parkway West High School, and I would like to thank the Board for this opportunity to celebrate what an amazing season our team had. I've been coaching for 13 years, and I can't say I have ever witnessed hardly any of what I've seen, let alone in a single season. Given that we didn't even know if we were going to have a competitive season this year, what these students accomplished was amazing, and I thank you again for the opportunity to celebrate everything that they have accomplished. The first student that we're going to celebrate is Paige Mathis-Pierce. She's going to be a senior next year. She was a first-year competitor this year, and as a novice, placed sixth at our district tournament and is going to be representing us at the national tournament in informative speaking. Next are three students who are all graduated seniors, who wanted one final opportunity to compete, so they applied for an additional spot to the national tournament in an event that none of them have competed in before called World Schools Debate. And it really is an amazing format of debate, and they were chosen out of several other applicants to be representatives for our Eastern Summit, but they will be competing in Nationals as well. So congrats to Praveen Dhammavallapu, Skylar G., and Ella Siegel. Our next pair is Yusuf Hacking and Tyler Kenzie. They are both graduated seniors as well. They have been competing for four years in an event called Policy Debate. They managed to qualify for the state tournament and were quarterfinalists in Policy Debate at the Michigan State Tournament. And additionally, they ended up placing third in Policy Debate at our other district tournament, qualifying them to Nationals as well, so they will be representing us in Policy Debate at Nationals. The next phenomenal student is Catherine McAuliffe. She is also a graduated senior. She also qualified to the state tournament in something called International Extemporaneous Speaking. She placed second in the state in this event, literally missing the state title by a single point. She is a phenomenal speaker, and it should be no surprise that she also placed at the district tournament and will be representing us in the same event at Nationals. Next, we have Ula Kaziz. She is a three-year competitor, who is also a graduated senior, and she qualified to the Michigan State Tournament and came away with a state championship in radio speaking. We also have graduated senior, four-year competitor, Grace O'Connor, who qualified to the state tournament and also came away with a state championship in poetry reading. Additionally, she is going to be representing us at Nationals as well in a different event. She placed second at districts and was able to qualify for Nationals in an event called Program of Oral Interpretation. Zoe Wommack and Laura Young are our final individual recognition. They have also been competing together for four years in an event called Public Forum Debate. They also qualified to the national tournament by placing third at our district tournament, but just like some of our other amazing females, they also came away. But just like some of our other amazing females, they also came away with a state championship in public forum. So that was three state championships. In my time here, I have had four total in the past 13 years, and so to have three in a single year is just phenomenal. It also so happened to be a year that we won a cumulative sweeps award at our East Missouri District Tournament for the MSDA. So from the years 2006 until 2020, we garnered the most points at a district tournament. In addition to the wonderful events that they succeeded at at state, we placed as a team, third in speech at the state tournament and second in debate at the state tournament. I am going to miss these seniors, but I'd like to think that we are all in very good hands, knowing what amazing young adults they have turned out to be. And thank you again for this opportunity to celebrate these just amazing students and all of their accomplishments.
It's incredibly hard to follow Cara Borges-Miller, but I think I also share her pride in our students and in all of our advisors. I've always been amazed at what these programs have been able to do in a regular school year, but what they've been able to do during a pandemic deserves such high praise. So thank you for letting us celebrate today and have a wonderful evening.
Next, please welcome via video, West High's Principal, Dr. Jeremy Mitchell, to introduce us to the winner of the 2021 U.S. Presidential Scholar.
Good evening, everyone. It is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to speak about Sri Jalati. Sri has had so many achievements over the last four years at West High. There's just too many to discuss without taking the entire evening. I just want to highlight a few things, though. First of all, at West High, he was involved in many things, and we could talk about the tennis team and science bowl, but he was founder and the president of two large organizations, our Cyber Security Club, which Mr. Rooks has had the pleasure of working with Sri to help get that off the ground, as well as our Advocacy Club here at West High. This allows students who are not 18, not able to vote yet, but still have a voice and make sure that their voices are heard. At the more national and regional level, Sri was named as one of the 100 Cameron Impact Scholars. He was recently put together a what's called COVID Vaccine Notify, which is a program website that allows, it's a statewide initiative that allows those who are without homes to make sure that they were getting vaccines or had access to the vaccines. And then all this work was kind of encapsulated by the selection of a presidential scholar. That does not happen very often here at West High. There's only, I believe, two per state, and Sri was one of them. So many great things to talk about Sri. I could go on, but congratulations for all you've done. I can't wait to hear the future and what's in front of you because Jalati 2044? Sounds good, right? I'm not sure if that's the right year wise, but something like that? Alrighty. Congratulations, Sri.
Next, please welcome Dr. Kevin Beckner, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, to recognize our perfect ACT students.
Well, thank you. Tonight, we recognize nine students who received a perfect score on the ACT. The ACT is a curriculum-based achievement exam that measures what students have learned in school. Students who earn a 36 composite score have likely mastered all of the skills and knowledge they will need to succeed in first-year college courses in the core subject areas. Nationally, while the actual number of students earning the top score varies from year to year, on average, fewer than 1% of students who take the ACT earn a top score. In the U.S., high school graduating class of 2020, only 5,579 out of nearly 1.67 million students who took the ACT earned a perfect score of 36. The ACT consists of tests in English, Mathematics, Reading, and Science, each scored on a scale of 1 to 36. A student's composite score is the average of the four test scores, and the optional writing test is reported separately. So tonight, we celebrate... Dr. Rooks told me how this works. From Central High, Daniel Barris. From Central High, Jeremy Lee. From South High, Louisa Lehman. From West High, the following students Bennett Christopherson, Connor Guskey, who I understand is in attendance tonight. Congratulations, Connor. Mitchell Harms, Paige Mathis-Pierce, Noah Shell, and Noah Withers. Congratulations to these nine amazing students.
Yep, congratulations indeed to all the students and schools and individuals we honored this evening. Certificates have been mailed to them. Thanks for those of us joining virtually for these special recognitions and to our one student here in the room. So thank you very much. Next up, we will take a short break and resume the meeting here. Okay, we will resume our meeting here. Next up on the agenda is 6.01, Addendums to Agenda Item 10.06, Approval of Personnel Items. Next up is Public Comments. During this time, we provide an opportunity for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. The public comment session is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters. Therefore, due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include any personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public, staff, and students are encouraged to utilize established policies and procedures for offering suggestions or addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the Board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the Board, including your statements at the podium, are broadcast and that you are responsible for any public comment you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the Board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using our contact information on the Parkway website. Tonight, I believe we have 13 citizens who wish to make comments, so we will have to limit our time to two minutes each. I will call on the speakers in the order that they have signed up and ask you to come to the podium. I'll probably try and keep two or three of you in the chairs over there, kind of in the holding area, so that we can keep this moving along. And then, as I mentioned before, if you're willing to remove your mask while you're making your statement, that'll help our interpreters. So first up, I have Danny Fisher.
I'm here to speak about the transition from Piedmont, from Parkway West to Parkway South. My little son will be a seventh grader in the Mosaics Academy, and the academy is what brought us to Piedmont five years ago. I don't know if anyone on the Board has a child in the academy, but academy kids are different. On average, they struggle more socially and are more introverted than students in the general education program. Many of them struggle with anxiety and stress, and some of them are on the spectrum. Most of the academy students have been virtual since March of 2020. They stayed virtual this year because the academy teachers stayed virtual, and attending school in person would not have made sense for them. So needless to say, five quarters of virtual schooling did not help their already stunted social development. They also lost the opportunity to meet other sixth graders in the general education program at middle school. Sending them to West Middle for a year, then to South Middle for a year, and then to West High is a mistake, and it will have negative effects on children who already struggle to adapt socially. These kids excel in many areas, but dealing with changing social settings is not one of them. There is no benefit for the students in moving the academy to South Middle, and I fail to see the wisdom or benefit for the district. The middle school academy has a total of 45 students. West Middle has 1,052 students and has capacity for 1,598 students. So please explain to me how it is critical to free up 45 desks at a school that's 546 students under capacity. Is there that much of a benefit to the district in moving 45 students, such that it outweighs the negative effects it will have on these students? Because I'm telling you, as a parent who knows these kids, it will not be a net positive in their lives. I recommend you speak to the academy teachers before making a decision. I don't want to criticize your plan without making a suggestion, so if the district is determined to low in capacity at West by transitioning Piedmont to South, why not start with the incoming kindergarten class? Have them go to South once they reach middle school, and grandfather anyone older than that class, plus their younger siblings. In six years, you will have reached your goal with significantly less trauma and disruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nicole Law.
My name is Nicole. My daughter is supposed to be starting kindergarten in the fall. She's very excited, but if things don't change, she will not be in a Parkway school. We, the taxpaying people that you work for, should have the right to choose and decide what is best for our own children, meaning to choose to get the COVID vaccine, masks, and anything pertaining to our children's health and well-being. With that being said, I'm going to leave with a quote. "I see nothing wrong with treating science like it's a religion if you're into that sort of thing. It's not science's fault that people are unwilling to think for themselves. The key principle in science is to take a position, test that position, evaluate if your position is correct, and then adjust your position based on data, then repeat. I think the problem is people forgot the last couple of steps. They don't evaluate or readjust. They just accept day-one information, and that is no longer science. That, my friends, is just propaganda." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Megan Turk.
My name is Megan Turk, and my family lives within the Piedmont Elementary School boundaries. As you know, we have been told by the district that our elementary school feeder pattern needs to change because West Middle has an overcrowding issue, and the ideal enrollment for Parkway Middle Schools is approximately 800 students. We agree that Parkway is an excellent district and South Middle is a good school. Our frustration with the proposed change is that we have not been given sufficient data and rationale as to why this change must happen. In addition to being a mother, I am also a financial controller for a large corporation here in St. Louis. I regularly help managers make decisions by presenting them with facts and data to better inform their decision-making. As managers, we typically do not make decisions that impact five or 10 people, let alone hundreds of families, without gathering the information and looking at the facts. While I understand a school and a business are two very different things, decision-making is the same, and a key principle of decision-making is gathering and analyzing information. The district has provided us enrollment projections and opinions on why West Middle is overcrowded. They have told us the ideal middle school enrollment is 800 students, but have not presented any recent study to show that this is true. As members of the school board elected by your community, you are decision-makers. In my opinion, if you were to vote yes on this proposal, you would be making a decision based on insufficient data. So I ask you two things. If you have been presented other information to help inform your decision, please share this with the community so that we may better understand the why. If you have not been given this data, I ask you take pause and determine if you truly have enough facts to make an informed decision that is best for the students. Thank you for all of your hard-working time. I do appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Laura Vivian.
My name is Laura Vivian, and I'm here to address the boundary changes proposed for Piedmont Elementary. I currently reside in the Piedmont attendance area with my family. My husband and I both attended Piedmont, West Middle, and West High. My husband and I both attended Piermont, West Middle, and West High. In fact, we attended West Middle while current Board member Dr. Sorrentino was principal there. With the recent proposal, my husband and I dug up our yearbooks to see how many students were at West Middle while we attended, to get a feel for how overcrowded the administrators' state is today. We were surprised to see that while we attended, there were around 1,200 students at the school, and this was even before the second gym was added on. In contrast, the highest number of students that Parkway projects at West Middle over the next five years with the existing boundaries is 1,070, 173 fewer students than we had in the building my sixth-grade year. I can say confidently that as a student at West Middle, I did not once feel there was an overcrowding issue. I look back fondly and recall the academics and character education, along with social growth during that time period. My experience, combined with the fact that there has been no data presented supporting the need for this disruptive change, make it clear that administrators are providing a solution to a problem that does not exist. There is data, however, that supports the fact that boundaries are just fine as they are. West Middle is at 66% building capacity, while South Middle is at 72%. West Middle contains 26% of the Parkway Middle School's student population and also has 26% of the Parkway Middle School classrooms. West Middle has a 15-to-1 student-teacher ratio. And lastly, Parkway's projections show flat enrollment for the next five years across all middle schools. Board members, as representatives of the Parkway community, I ask of you, will you please vote no on this unnecessary boundary change and leave the feeder patterns as they are today? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kelly McKittrick.
Thank you for giving me this chance to speak. My name is Kelly McKittrick, and I have a daughter going into sixth grade at West Middle and a son in third grade going at Piermont. I myself was a graduate of West Middle and West High, and Dr. Sorrentino was my principal while I was there. When I was in seventh, when I was in seventh grade, my brother and sister were in high school. No, we were not in middle school together at the same time, but I was glad that they were there to wa, that, right. But having them walk the halls before me made me feel so much better. My sister took the time to give me a tour at West Middle before my first day. All of her past teachers were so excited to see her and welcomed me into this new school. This is the day that made me so excited to be a student at West. On the first day, I remember sitting in the bleachers in PE class, and Mr. Gelbach was reading the attendance. He asked me if Brian was my brother. I smiled and said yes. He looked back at me and smiled as well. My heart was so full and so excited to be a part of this family at West. That is what Parkway is. Parkway is a family. It is a big family, and each school is an individual family. If you agree with this rezoning proposal, my children will go to two different middle schools, and they will not be a part of the same middle school family. They will not walk the same halls, they will not have the same experiences, the teachers will not know the McKittrick kids. West will know one, and South will know the other. As their mom, I want them to have the same experiences in middle school and have that bond. So before you make your decision, I ask you one question. Is this how you feel your Piermont family should be raised?
Thank you. Next up, we have Yvette Lothen.
I spoke at the last board meeting, and I am here again to voice concern regarding the proposal to change the feeder pattern of Piermont Elementary from West Middle to South Middle School. My name is Dr. Yvette Lothen. I am a scientist, and I specialize in analyzing large data sets. The principal of West Middle School, Dr. Miller, claims that West Middle feels overcrowded. Feelings can vary greatly from person to person. We need to find a way to support our feelings with meaningful and appropriate data. My children, who are in the West school system, are not numbers. However, we can use numbers to support our feelings and ensure the best possible school experience for our children. Are there a lot of students at West Middle? Absolutely. However, using Parkway's CAPRA, I commented at the last board meeting that the percent capacity at South Middle is currently higher than West. Mr. Todd kindly responded via email to my comments that the CAPRA is not the appropriate data to evaluate crowding. So what is the appropriate data? Research states that optimal class size has a student-to-teacher ratio of 13-to-1 at the low end and 17-to-1 at the high end. According to Parkway Administration, West Middle School has an average student-to-teacher ratio of 15-to-1, well within that recommended range. Of note, all of the Parkway Middle Schools have average student-to-teacher ratios within this range. Thus, student-to-teacher ratio is not the appropriate metric to support overcrowding at West Middle School. I am requesting that the Board submit to the Parkway Administration this question. What data supports the claim of overcrowding at West Middle School? Thank you very much for your time this evening and for your service to the Parkway community.
Thank you. I accidentally jumped one person ahead, so I skipped over Allison Bowers. So we'll hear from Allison now, and I also forgot to give several of you a heads-up who will be speaking next. Those next ones will be John Wischnowski, Jamie Powell Small, and Tiffany Miranda.
I can start.
You may, yes.
Good evening. My name is Allison Bowers. I'm the mother of a rising sixth grader and also a rising third grader at Piermont. I am the proud Parkway South alumni as well, and I'm married to a Parkway South alum. I am not here to dog Parkway South. What I am here to do is to say that this change is disruptive to my children and my lives. My son is not a number, and quite honestly, that's all I've heard. He's not a problem, he's not an inconvenience, he's not an issue, and he's not on a graph or a chart. Instead, he's a child that has had a very, very challenging year and a half. I'm tired of hearing my children is, my child is resilient, he's honestly not, and his mental health has shown otherwise. I don't think he needs to be. He needs to be a child, and he needs to trust that adults are making decisions with his best social and educational development in mind. Over the last three years, I've been intentionally preparing my child for his future. He is a member of the Ballin Eagles. It is comprised of children from three other West feeder schools. He also goes to Hycroft Element, uh, Hycroft Summer School, and he's been going to Adventure Club at the various Parkway West feeder schools over the last three years. These are all intentional planned decisions I have made as his parent to set him up for success. This sole out-of-touch proposal that was offered by the administration clearly shows we are doing everything but considering these kids. If they were, they would never have proposed uprooting these deeply-seated boundary lines that have been in place since I was a student at Barrett's Elementary. I'm requesting you, Board, today to go back to the administration and request them to go back to the drawing board. They have clearly missed the mark on this proposal. Thank you again for your community service. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have John Wischnowski.
My name is John Wischnowski, and I have four children who attend or will attend Piermont Elementary. My wife Jen is a product of the Parkway school system and Allison's sister. When we settled here to raise our family, we made a very deliberate decision to purchase a home in the Parkway West School District. I am not from here, and I trusted Jen's perspectives on why this was right for our family. But one key element about her views stood out to me, one I was very aligned with, her steadfast view that having consistency for our children, particularly related to building long-term relationships they could depend upon throughout their schooling years. Her views were rooted in her own firsthand experience, where she started kindergarten at Mason Ridge, attending through fourth grade. Due to a family situation, she moved to Shenandoah Valley to finish her elementary years. Following the Parkway Central track from there, being pulled away from her peers and those established friendships at a critical developmental age and forced to establish new friendships in an unfamiliar environment was difficult for her socially, emotionally, and academically. I see parallels with what you were forcing the children of Piermont Elementary to take on. Shifting a small group of children and their families away from their planned path forward will have ramifications. This is not a situation we want for our children. I don't believe you would want it for your own children, so you should not want it for ours. The Board should represent the interests of the constituency. This is not in the best interest of your constituency, and I fail to see who this actually, who actually supports this or benefits from this proposal. By our own data and metrics, it's an unjustified and unnecessary move, and it's overly disruptive to long-term plans families have built their lives around. As parents yourselves, you set forth children on a schooling path, and you're proud of your child's experience in the Parkway school system. But did any of your children get pulled from that planned path for three years because of decisions made by somebody else? Did your family develop meaningful relationships through athletics, music, or the arts, and have their rug pulled out from them with a need to build entirely new friendships or leave some relationships behind, all because of decisions made by someone else? Did you have decisions made without any substantiated or verifiable or justifiable reason or true exploration, exploration of multiple alternatives? This is what we're facing, and we hope the Board will go back and do the due diligence that is needed to make a decision of this magnitude. Please consider the human elements of this and vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jamie Powell Small.
My name is Jamie Powell Small, and I live within the Piermont School District, and I'm here to talk about the Piermont boundary lines. My husband and his siblings attended Piermont West Middle and West High Schools, which is why we chose to settle in this area. My husband and I have two children, ages nine and twelve, rising fourth graders, rising seventh grader. As the Board Administration is already aware, Concerned Residents created a website, gathered information, and set up a petition to keep Piermont Feeding into West Middle School. When discussed at the last meeting, the petition had about 500 signatures. The petition now has over 750 signatures. The opposition to the proposal continues to grow as more impacted families learn of the proposed changes. This is not just a few people who are in opposition, it's a large community. We have various reasons but one goal: to keep Piermont Feeding into West Middle School. Many times, school officials have justified this proposal with the idea that this somehow creates equity among middle schools. There has been no factual evidence that these changes are necessary or that equity will be created. Equity is not defined by the number of students on a campus, when all campuses are not the same size or able to offer the same services. I don't think anyone would argue that this is beneficial to the remaining students at West Middle School. The students appear, excuse me, but it creates a greater equity division between the middle schools. The proposal will have a profound impact on the students at Piermont, but for what purpose? As this takes no steps towards equity, in turn, West Middle into the lowest-capacity middle school for a student population that is succeeding under its existing attendance numbers and has done so for many years. We are requesting that this summer, the Parkway Administration and Board of Education hold an in-person town hall meeting in which we have the opportunity to use a microphone and ask questions rather than just have common topics discussed. And we want to receive responses to the many specific and relevant questions and concerns that parents have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Tiffany Miranda, followed by Michael Bertsch, Mary Brownell, and Connor Guske.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Miranda, and my children attended Piermont Elementary. I also spoke at the last board meeting. Through the course of this process and even this evening, many parents have requested better justification to support the claim that West Middle is overcrowded or research studies that limit middle school enrollment to 800 students. We have yet to see this data, but based on the available information, capacity doesn't seem to be a problem. Student-to-teacher ratio is not a problem. Student performance is not a problem. So we ask again if we could please be provided with the evidence that there is a problem and that this problem is exclusive to West Middle School. Creating equity in student enrollment numbers is not creating equity between middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michael Bertsch.
Good evening. Dr. Marty, Mr. Over, President Todd, and members of the Board, thanks again for the opportunity to address you. First, I'd like to say thank you to the Board and the Administration for your dedication in doing everything possible to make this a successful year for all in Parkway. You probably don't hear that enough. I'm sure there were untold hours of meetings and planning and adjusting on how to handle the unprecedented. Second, I'd especially like to thank the teachers and the staff in Parkway, whom I witnessed, time and again, rising to both the occasion and the challenge, and seeking to meet our students' needs, where they were and whatever way that they could. These professional educators should be recognized and respected for their efforts that went above and beyond. With respect to what lies ahead, it does feel like perhaps the worst of the pandemic is behind us. Keep in mind, however, that while case numbers are down, when adjusted for the vaccinated population, case rates have not fallen the same, and we should watch them now that restrictions have eased. I would urge you to remain data-driven, keeping the needs of all in mind. I imagine you've heard from a rather loud vocal minority making demands about masks or distancing and vaccine requirements. What you need to know is that while they may be loud and they may fill your inbox, I would argue that they are not at all the majority of the community. I believe that a significant majority support the mitigation measures taken to keep our students and staff safe and preventing disruptive outbreaks. You probably don't hear as much from this majority because they're going about their lives, taking actions to be part of the solution. They realize this is a public health issue and needs collective action. Hopefully, conditions will allow for a more normal school environment in the fall. Again, I urge you to stay objective, watch the data, and remain true to the district's mission and our duty to the compromised, to the vulnerable, to the all in Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mary Brownell.
I am here to talk to you tonight about the potential move of the Mosaic Academy students to South Middle School. My son is a student in the Mosaic Academy. The last we were told this move would move the academy to South Middle as well. I am a firm believer that my children will receive, will receive a wonderful education no matter what school they attend in Parkway. That is why we live in this district. When I initially heard the proposal, I was disappointed, mainly because we live in the West boundaries. I did not want to have to drive my son to South. I then felt that if the move was going to happen, it needed to happen now. My son is going into seventh grade, and he has been inside West Middle School one time. The majority of the seventh-grade students are in the same boat. The sixth graders will also be going to a new school. It made sense to me to move them now. I reached out and sent emails about my thoughts and was told there would be a Mosaic Academy meeting. That has not happened. As time has passed, I have given this much thought. An exceptionally gifted child is unique, and very few educators are trained to work with our kids. The non-academy West Middle School teachers have worked with our children. They have an understanding of our students. Our kids are part of the culture there, a part of that school. A teacher who is not certified to work with exceptionally gifted children needs to have a unique understanding. The West Middle School Administration and teachers have this understanding. Exceptionally gifted children have many social and emotional needs as well. All children do, but many of our children are highly emotional and anxious. Making friends and building relationships outside of the academy is difficult. If you move the Mosaic Academy to South Middle School, that will mean my son will be in five different places in five years. Fifth grade for Piermont, sixth grade virtual, seventh grade West Middle, eighth grade South Middle, ninth grade West High School. Moving them five different places in five years isolates these kids even more and prevents them from building relationships outside of the academy. Please do not make a decision on based on numbers. Children are not a number, my child is not a number, and the academy students are not numbers. I've heard the term change is hard. In my opinion, this isn't about change being hard, it is about making the best decision for our kids. Please have them meeting the academy parents were promised, and please keep the Mosaic Academy at West Middle School, because it is what is best for the academy kids. The academy kids are not numbers.
Thank you. Next up is Connor Guske.
My name is Connor Guske. I'm sure you've already heard a lot about the Piermont to South proposal, but I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight and give a student perspective as a current rising senior at West High, as well as a graduate of both West Middle and Piermont Elementary. I also have a younger sister currently at Piermont with plans to follow in the same track, so this issue greatly pertains to both me and my family. Years ago, as an incoming kindergartner at Piermont, I was placed in Mosaics Academy, a class of only seven. However, I was lucky enough to be able to attend regular kindergarten as well, where I made the majority of my friends that I kept throughout elementary school. I believe so many friendships that carry through the fifth grade are started in kindergarten because kindergarten is a time where people from across the area come together for the first time, meet, get to know each other, and grow close. In the same way, I believe so many of the friendships that carry through to senior year, where I am now and further, were started in middle school. Besides kindergarten, middle school is the only other time where new students are introduced from across the area: Claymont, Henry, Piermont, Mason Ridge, and more. The same class of kids that departed eighth grade will be the same class of kids that arrive as freshmen. My closest relationships, including some of my best friends, I met in middle school. I'm at the place in my life that I am now due to the seamless transition between the two schools. If the students at Piermont feed into South Middle and are uprooted yet again to come back to West High, in my experience, many of the friend groups and friendships will already be set in stone. I feel that the Piermont students who didn't get the opportunity in middle school to be introduced to and form friendships and memories with everyone else moving on to West High would be, for lack of a better word, ostracized by their peers and viewed as the newcomers. To many students, friends are the best part of coming to school, and for me personally, I would hope that no one, including my sister, would lose the opportunity to be a part of the amazing friendships that can truly last a lifetime. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for June 16, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, August 11, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM at the Parkway Welcome Center. Next up, we'll do board liaison reports.
All right. Tonight is the last board meeting for our 2021 school year, and just one, it's been a strange year for a lot of, for all of us in this room, and I just want to kind of say thanks to the students, to the parents, to the communities, to the teachers, to the staff, to the administration, to Dr. Marty, and to my fellow board members. It's been a long haul for all of us this year, but I think looking at Parkway and what we've done this past year, we've come a long way, we've been very flexible, we've made some adjustments along the way, we've watched the data, we follow what's going on in the community. I think we've done a pretty good job overall to get to the point where we are today. So I do commend everybody in the Parkway area for getting to us, getting us to this point where we are in this community today, and the fact that over the past few weeks, I've actually visited a classroom, I've actually gone to a choir concert, actually gone to a graduation. There are hints of us actually getting back to normal. So as we look at the summer, things are already adjusting. I just hope that if you can get vaccinated, please get vaccinated. This will help our community and help us get back all the kids in school five days this fall. Thank you.
Well, Matt, you stole most of what I was going to say. It was so exciting to go to graduations. I had the honor of speaking at Fern Ridge's graduation, the first time I've ever spoken on a football field, PA, and boy, is that a weird experience. It made me slow down when I speak because you can hear the echo after you say something, and making me slow down when I speak is a good thing. It was a wonderful personal ceremony, and I'm so honored that I was able to be there. Then I got to go to West's graduation, and it was just amazing to see those students walk across the stage. You know, Matt mentioned going into classrooms. I haven't been into a classroom yet, but seeing our students in action is one of the things that feeds a board member's heart. This job needs feeding of the heart sometimes because sometimes the work's hard, and these past few weeks gave me that in a way that I haven't been able to experience as a board member in a while. I have to echo Matt's thanks because that's how I was going to finish up my report, was thanks to everybody in this community. We know we've still got challenges ahead of us. We're always going to have those, but seeing the way I'm seeing some members of the community come together to make sure we can be back in our schools healthy and safe next year, we just need to keep doing that. We have to work together to make sure our students can be in school together in the way that we want them to be. I just hope everybody thinks about that over the summer because we want a different school year next year than we had this year, and we have the power to do that as a community. Thanks.
I just want to echo what Pam and Matt said as well. Being a longtime administrator, board member, and Parkway, Parkway always pulled together. Our faculty, our parents, our administrators, and even our students, we had great working relationships. This year, we had a very unusual situation, as you all know, and once again, Parkway worked together. Everyone pulled together. It's been difficult, it's not been perfect in any respect, but it's remarkable that Parkway's strength and who we are as a district and who we are as a people, whether we're a child or a middle school student or a high school student, a teacher, administrator, someone working at facilities or wherever, we pull together, we work together. It's phenomenal that we've had a year that's been very difficult, but it's been a very, very successful year. And I too want to thank everyone, every single individual, and particularly our students who sacrificed a great deal, and it was heartbreaking. You know, being a school administrator, it's heartbreaking for me to realize that the kids were not in school for a good portion of the year, or they were in a hybrid, or they were in a virtual. But next year will be different, and I think we'll all work together to make it a absolutely wonderful year for them as well. I went to the North High graduation. It was so refreshing. It was unusual. I remember graduations on Fields, and then we had Quinney Park, et cetera, but to be where we were and sitting out and watching the graduates, feeling so proud and so ready to graduate and move on, and to see all the cars out there was really unusual, but it was so gratifying, and it was a very, very special time. So let's pull together, let's continue what we've done in the past, and let's have a wonderful year next year.
Thank you. Today was my daughter's third day attending summer school in Parkway, so at Hannah Woods Elementary School is where she's going, and I've been really happy to have her there these three days. She's had a great time, happy to be part of the enrichment programs and also Adventure Club. Several other students are in summer boost. I know Parkway has made a large effort to offer additional summer boost programs for elementary students to get caught up on math and reading, and that they may have fallen a little bit behind in due to virtual learning, so it's been really great to see students taking part in all those programs. I also want to acknowledge that this Saturday, we celebrate a new federal holiday, and that is Juneteenth, and that is a holiday that celebrates, that commemorates the end of slavery in our country, which is a holiday that's really important to a lot of our students and a holiday that unfortunately I didn't learn about until about five or six years ago. I've had the privilege of being able to educate myself on that, which brings me to the topic of our equity report that we're getting tonight, to tonight later, and the importance of the work that's happening with that task force. Sam and I had the privilege of working with that task force for 10 months, which was two months longer than we anticipated being together because we wanted to take the time to get it right. It started with a survey last year, which was of our students, our parents, our administrators, that looked at the experiences of different students in Parkway, and the results of that survey showed us that we had some work to do. So there was a good faith effort to bring together a really diverse group of people who worked side by side in good faith and in goodwill to lay down a path that would ensure equity for all of our kids and ensure that all of our students have the opportunity to be successful in our schools. This included students, this included parents, this included elected officials from both sides of the aisle, it included teachers, it included administrators, clergy, other community members, et cetera, and we kept coming back. Our meetings were for two or three hours on Thursday evenings, once a month after we had all done Zoom all day. We got in another Zoom, and we stuck it out, and we worked together, and we had difficult conversations, we respected each other, and we saw each other's humanity because it was the right thing to do for our kids. We had hard discussions, which are important. We have to learn to have hard discussions as adults because we need our kids to learn to have hard discussions with each other so that we can all be successful together, which is the goal. We'll hear more about the equity report tonight, but speaking for myself, as a member of the group that spent 10 months putting that together, and I'm going to assume Sam agrees with me on this, I think we have a product that we can be really proud of and that we can be proud as a community to support and embrace, and again, move forward on what's best for all of our students. So, thank you.
Good evening. So I also participated in some graduations. On Monday, I took part in the Parkway North graduation, and for those who don't know, the graduations this year were done essentially in a parking lot, but the Parkway North one was wonderful. You know, it was great to see the kids graduate, it was great to have the community together, and as I was leaving, I almost thought to myself, this might be even better than the way we used to do these, unless, of course, it rains. And then the next night was Parkway Central's graduation, and of course, it rained. But what I noticed that night is the way the district and the school and the administrators and everybody adjusted to that circumstance really kind of highlighted some of the best things about Parkway. There was, they were presented with a problem. The principal, Dr. McCarthy of Central, stepped up to the table as a leader and came up with a plan to adapt that evening's festivities so that the most important parts of the night, the parts that centered on the kids, would be, would transpire. So they cut out everything in the program that didn't have anything to do with the students. They walked out, and the students immediately walked across the stage and got their diplomas. All the speakers that weren't Parkway Central students were removed from the program. Jeff Todd didn't get to talk, but I'm hoping he'll use his time tonight to go over the speech he would have given that. But it was just, the way it was handled, I thought, was just so telling of how this district does things. There was leadership, adaptability, the competence to pull it off, and the focus on putting the kids first. And, you know, what could have been a, you know, a difficult night, I thought was a real showcase for the way this district can operate under tough circumstances.
I too had the pleasure of attending West High graduation, and I have to say it was really a fun time and a great opportunity for those students. Everybody was so proud that night, so it was great to be able to have one of our very first in-person events at that. In addition to the other comments that my colleagues have made, I too agree with everything that has been said, thanking immensely our administration, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our special school district in keeping things going. It has been a difficult year, no doubt. With that, I also attended on June 7, the governing council meeting for the special school district. We are still doing those meetings by Zoom. There's 22 partner districts that attend that in addition to the special school district board and parents and administrators there. At that meeting, we did our governing council orientation so that new members could be oriented to what the governing council is and how things operate within the special school district. We also approved the comprehensive school improvement plan for 2021 and 2022. Four major goals that came out of the special school district's comprehensive plan are, revolve around staffing, curricular support, facilities and buildings, and equity. There will be an increase of roughly 35 teachers at their partner, that'll get, let me, let me take, step that back, but those are the primary things that are taking place within the comprehensive school improvement plan. We also approved the budget, the special school district budget for fiscal year of 2022. The goals with that are that there has been a huge promotion of trying to improve the curriculum and staff support within the special school district, and with that, in summary, there will be an increase of roughly 95 positions primarily related around additional staff at this, including teachers at the special schools, district schools themselves, including an addition of 35 teachers at our partner districts. This will help to decrease the amount of caseload that our teachers within the special school districts, partner districts have. There will also be in addition of paraprofessionals, OT and PT, or occupational therapy and physical therapy, social and behavioral supports, speech and language pathologists. There will also be an additional 37.4 FTEs at the special school district teaching and learning programs. So with that, a total increase of roughly 95 positions surrounding curriculum and special services and a reduction of 43 and a half positions that were eliminated primarily through attrition. The other thing that the special school district did recently is did an audit of their brand positioning. They have developed a new mission and vision statement. They have new logo and a tagline. What they're finding is that they needed to find better ways to promote the services and programs within the special school district. So you will be seeing, rolling out in the summer of 2021, what their new mission and vision are, as well as what their new logo and tagline will be so that they can promote their services more, so that we can improve the awareness of what special school district does. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And thank you, everyone else. As Pam said, you took a few things I was going to say, but that's, that's always the way it goes. But I do want to reiterate Matt's and Pam's point of thanks to our community and thanks to our staff and our students and our families for everything that, that you've done this year, everything that has gone on behind the scenes that we, we just take for granted and it just happened, and it, it all just worked out. There were lots of challenges, obviously, there were lots of successes, some of which we heard about tonight, some in extraordinary ways. So I think, looking back, I think I would call it a successful year with a lot of things we could have done differently, but still, we're here today, and we had over 1,000 kids graduate from Parkway High Schools and are headed off to bigger and better things from here forward. So that, that to me is why we do it, is why our teachers teach every day. One of those successes I got to, I got to watch was the West volleyball state championship, and it was just, it was amazing to see how an event like that could take place with the restrictions that were in place at the time, and some of the other events that have taken place over the year with the restrictions that we've still managed to, to do a lot. So that was, that was exciting. And then, as Kevin mentioned, the graduation, I attended Central's graduation, and it was a very, it was, it was minute by minute. I was, I was sitting next to Dr. McCarthy, and I was behind a table, and so the audience couldn't see that he and I were looking at the, the weather radar on my phone as names were, you know, being called and we're like, okay, do we, do we cross this one off the list, do we cross this speaker off the list? And he turns to me, he said, are you okay not speaking? Absolutely. You know, we, we put the kids first, and that's what's important. The other thing I got to do is I got to participate in an all administrator meeting about a week or so ago, was all the building principals and assistant principals and a lot of department leaders throughout the district, and one of the things that, that was fascinating to me was when, when they had this very same meeting a year ago, I guess at the beginning of the school year, it was a lot of, what do you think's going to happen? You know, we were all planning for this, this magical mystery school year that we were about to have, and there were a lot of predictions made, and this was compare and contrast, so to speak, to what has happened and how different buildings overcame different things and how different departments were still able to get their work done, and it was just, it was very reassuring as a board member to see how each of these groups and buildings were able to succeed throughout the year. So I just really appreciate being a part of that and being able to get that perspective as a board member, so. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Marty?
Well, well, if you don't mind, just a few comments. Thank you, board members. That was some wonderful comments. Graduation, which people have, all of, almost everybody addressed, I just want to say thank you to our principals, but I also want to honor Dr. Watson, who brought the principals together and worked hard to get the Powerplex facility. So I think Dr. Watson deserves appreciation for getting it all organized. It was a different venue, and it took a lot of coordination, obviously. I also want to say that we have three building principals who are retiring this year. We normally have a celebration, which we did virtually this year, but I just want to salute publicly Lisa Luna from Ross, Renee Summers from Green Trails, and Tori Kane, the North High School principal, all retiring and moving on. No, Tori's not retiring, I'm sorry. Tori's not retiring, she's moving on to a new position in Pattonville, sorry. But we have replacements, excellent replacements that'll be taken, and we'll be meeting those folks a little bit later, and Dr. Watson's going to be leading a, a new administrator orientation in early July. But I want to thank them, and also I want to thank Bobby Fleming, who is moving on to a new position. She's our director of special education, and we also have a director, a new director of nursing or health services. So I want to thank those people. Relative to summer school, just want to say that we have a little over 3,400 students in-- in summer school. How does that compare to other years? We would have about half, I mean, we'd have over 7,000 students in a normal year, that because we normally have more of a robust enrichment program. So as was mentioned, we're doing a lot of catch-up, a lot of kind of opportunity to give the students that kind of focus, and Dr. Beckner has been leading, and Jennifer Stanfield, that effort. So we think that's great. Summer school started this week. I just have to say again, our students are so compliant to our ongoing effort to keep kids safe with face coverings. We're going to do that through June, as I think you're aware. And I just want to say our students, our staff have been so wonderful in working through what we have committed to. We committed to our families when we were planning summer school back, I think, in February, March, that we would do that because we didn't know what the conditions would be. So we're maintaining that really because of our commitment to many students who are coming back to us who are in virtual education. I just also want to just salute my leadership team and Nikki Stover. I could go on and on here, but when we talk about enduring a lot and being flexible, some of the people you're seeing sitting here, Mr. Tandy, Dr. Bogus, Dr. Beckner, Patty Bedborough, Dr. Watson, and Greg Matheson, Dr. Matheson's not with us tonight, but these folks have done some wonderful work. Sometime I'm just amazed at their ability to be creative and pull things together. So I want to thank them publicly as we kind of wrap up the year, as Matt started to have a wrap-up time. I think we have a lot to be proud of at every level. And I think our community should be so proud of our Board of Education, who, I think Nikki has added up the number of meetings we had this year. It was kind of a record, I think, and hours that the board spent in meetings and giving us support and advice and listening oftentimes to the community and to staff. So board members, thank you. And again, your support and your intensity to do what's right has been so evident. So thank you for the opportunity to wrap up the, what has kind of been a, as we've all mentioned, a most interesting year. I've been in public education 45 years, and this has been the most unusual, but in many respects, the most rewarding, to be able to problem solve and to kind of create some new things and at the end look back and say, you know, overall, as has been mentioned, some good things happen. Do we have some things to overcome? Certainly, we have some students that have needs, and we know mental health and social, emotional needs are very, very much a part of some of the concerns we all share, but overall, we should be very, very proud of what we were able to accomplish this year. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Let's see, we have no subcommittee reports tonight and no upcoming subcommittee meetings to announce. So next up is our consent agenda, which is a rather healthy one. We've all reviewed. So at this time, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the June 16th, 2021 board materials.
So moved.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Next up, I would like to introduce, back to the podium, Ms. Patty Bedborough, our CFO, and she will talk about the 2022 budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for allowing me to present the budget. Last month, we did a comprehensive review of everything that is included in our budget. So during the past month, I just have to do a complete shout-out to Brian Whittle, our Director of Finance, and Joyce Peasel, which is my admin assistant, where we took all those numbers and then laid them into this book that we, we call our budget book. We have used a slightly different format this year with an executive summary and then the organizational summary, and of course, the financial summary, similar to past years, but at more of a consistent layout. We hope to apply for the meritorious budget award through the Association of School Business Officials. So with this, I just ask if you have any questions from the budget or from the budget presentation last month?
Anyone have any questions? I actually have a question that is not financial in nature, but it's in, it's in the budget book.
Just your station question.
I noticed on page 118, we talked about the dropout rate.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I was pleasantly surprised to see that our dropout rate has overall decreased, especially between Black and mixed-race students. And I'm wondering if we know why that is and what we can do to continue that trend that we've seen over the last several years.
Well, I certainly do not know that response to the question, but I'm wondering if Dr. Beckner knows that. So a lot of this data in this informational section, we did pull from Dr. Nathan Tyson, which of course, this is performance measures that are included on the DUCY website. So now I'm going to defer to Dr. Beckner.
So obviously, we have variation in our dropout rate and our graduation from, rate from year to year. I think a lot of the work that we've seen go into making sure that our students are graduating, are graduating in four years. The credit really is student by student, our high school administrators, our high school assistant principals, our counselors, just following up with those students, trying to find them opportunities. We've certainly leveraged things like our Missouri Options Program. We've, you know, obviously, we've got Fern Ridge where students who might need credit recovery go. We've got great leadership over there. So there's not a single answer to why has this gone down. It's a comprehensive effort where everybody's working together and trying to leverage all of those different pieces that we can put into place, because the reason any student might drop out is going to vary from student to student. And so that's going to mean that we're going to have to identify with each student, what's the cause of this issue? How might we support this student? How might we help? And that might include things that we do in the school, but it also could include making sure that they have social work services. There might be something going on outside the family that they need additional support. So we heard a lot tonight about kids aren't just numbers, and even in this rate, these aren't just numbers. These are kids who each have a different story, and I think a lot of the credit goes to our staff, who's just working so hard to figure out, how do we get these students to cross the finish line? How do we get them to graduate? Because I know, especially that second semester of senior year, those administrators are just killing themselves to try to get those kids over the finish line. And so I think it's really a team effort, and a lot of credit goes to our high school staff.
Mr. Todd, can I, I think if Greg Matheson was here, he'd jump up and want to talk a little bit about our effort the last several years with, after a result of the mental health task force. So, you know, and Kevin mentioned it, but you know, a lot of times, students are dropping out. It's not academic. I mean, they're, they got the skills, there's other issues, and I think our efforts over the last couple of years to address social, emotional, mental health needs, thanks to the board's support of some of the care coordinator positions and others focuses on social workers, which was mentioned, has also been a factor, because I believe we, we really are, again, concerned about that whole child. And again, it's not, oftentimes not academic. Children are very, can be very successful. There's just so much going on in their lives that need to be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any other questions?
Well, page 119.
Sorry, I made notes. By the way, I was one of those kids that was helped over the finish line that second semester of my senior year. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
So next, we have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the 2021-2022 expenditure budget as presented by the administration in the amount of $308,507,664 with $85,720,342 to be expended from the general fund, $160,406,939 from the special revenue fund, $38,018,327 from the capital funds, capital projects fund, and $24,362,556, let me say that number again, $24,362,056 from the debt service fund.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. C. Rattino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Todd, can I, so as, Patty, I just want to just mention something we've been talking about the last several days, and it's been on Ms. Bedborough's agenda and others. And so I don't want you to get into details, Patty, but one of the things that we've been really working hard is how we're going to expend of, you know, federal dollars and local dollars, state dollars that are coming to us as a result of the concern that government has had about schools. And so I just want to say, Patty, this might be a quick opportunity just to say that we will be talking more about that and sharing publicly and actually seeking some public input, which we have to do in these expenditures. So I just hope maybe take the opportunity just to, again, don't go in the weeds, but just a little bit about, you know, some of the work we're doing briefly.
Excellent. So as Dr. Marty mentioned, we do have two new sources of federal funding, SIR 2 in the amount of about $5.3 million, and then SIR 3 funds, just under $12 million. We have essentially two more years to spend SIR 2 and three years to spend SIR 3. Part of the requirements is to obtain public input and then input from our stakeholders too, which includes our students, our teachers, our staff at all levels, of course, our administrators in developing, you know, where the priorities are, and then working on, you know, how to best spend that money. So developing that criteria very simply will be, how does it help to respond to COVID? How is it directly related to COVID? Making sure that it is not a recurring expenditure, because this money is only good for three years. And then it, you know, it's only so much goes away, it's not infinite. So it needs to just be one time, and how do we help to recover some of our learning loss from our students? So how do, how do we make it student-focused? And then with the requirements, there are additional criteria or availability for the funds that includes building improvements such as to HVAC systems, et cetera. So integrating with, you know, our PNEA where they have the CIAT Health and Safety Committee will, will utilize them along with, you know, some of the findings that our facilities group has brought in order to say, okay, here's the focus for our building expenses, but truly engaging our SAT members along with everyone in their departments in order to come up with plans that are student-focused and meet the needs of our students. Was that brief enough?
That was good spontaneity. Your eyes are so good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Next, I'd like to welcome Carter Snow, our Coordinator of Student Assessment, and Carter's going to share a few words about our comprehensive assessment plan.
Thank you. Good evening and happy summer, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. Happy to present to you next year's comprehensive assessment plan for your consideration. We believe this year's plan outlines a strong and balanced system that gives educators the information they need to support student learning and for students, the feedback they need to grow. The 2021-22 school year plan contains changes that reflect our continued need for online delivery of assessments and the need to identify and address potential learning gaps created by the pandemic or other student needs. I'll highlight just a few changes that we have from this year's plan to next year's. This school year, we delivered our district benchmark assessments a little out of order because we didn't give our third benchmark at the end of the previous school year, right when the pandemic started. So this year, we're going to get back to a little bit of normalcy and give them in-order benchmark one, two, and three in elementary. Our middle school benchmarks were optional for the 2021 school year and will be required for our next school year as we prioritized more formative data for our teachers and students as they worked through the beginning of this school year and the pandemic. We're also going to align some of our elementary benchmark assessments and unit assessments with the quarter system as we report out progress four times a year for parents in elementary as opposed to three times a year as we had previously done. And then finally, we're going to give a practice ACT to our juniors next year in the fall, which is something that we weren't able to do this spring, so we want to give them an opportunity to take a practice ACT, get a feeling for that assessment, the timing of it, the content that's covered, so that when they take the real deal ACT with us in the spring, they'll be more prepared for that experience. So thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to any questions you might have about next year's assessment plan.
Anyone have any questions before we vote?
Carter, just one quick question. Do you, to state-required assessments, do you anticipate any kind of changes at the state level, kind of what we've learned coming out of COVID, what's necessary, what's not, what, how things might go differently as we look to the future?
Yeah, so there, from, from the state, I think their focus obviously has been getting through this year. There are some, some dates and things we still have questions about even for next year. I will celebrate one area of success that we've had, and so the state, I think this spring, you know, there was a question about how we deliver the MAP assessment to our students, given the fact that many of them were virtual and, and school districts across the state were completely virtual. And so the state put in place a 85% participation rate as the goal for school districts. If a school district didn't meet that rate, we were expected to deliver that assessment in the fall. And so you can imagine that students and teachers weren't necessarily super excited about giving the MAP test in the fall, as we wanted to focus on local assessments. So very happy and proud to say that we're going to be well above that participation rate, so have to say thank you to our building test teams, our parents who are willing to bring their students in for testing, and all of our, all of our teachers and students who come in and participate in that test to meet that rate. So that is one change that I think some schools, districts will experience next year for state testing that we won't. We'll be fortunate to not have to do that requirement. But in terms of state testing for MAP, for MAPA, et cetera, the windows kind of remain similar. Don't expect any large changes. I think everybody's obviously very curious. Last time I was here, we spoke about what that data might look like in terms of achievement for our students of pandemic, and so I think everybody's curious to look at that with the concerns that, you know, even though we had a high participation rate, some of the students most impacted weren't able to test.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the 2021-2022 comprehensive assessment plan as presented in the June 16th, 2021 board meeting materials.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. C. Rattino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved, Board of Education approved ordering materials and scoring services for the following assessments. The Missouri Assessment Program estimated at $30,000. The Naglieri Nonverbal Ability Test III, and N-A-T III, estimated at $16,500. Missouri Assessment Partnership, MOAP, estimated at $15,000, and the ACT state and district testing estimated at $60,920. These funds would come from the 2022 Assessment Program budget. The funds for the AP exam estimated at $254,900 would come from the 2021-2022 Parkway High Schools activity accounts.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. C. Rattino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. We have no policy review this evening, so next up, we have several reports, the first which is 13.01, our Equity Task Force recommendations. So I'm going to call on Dr. Greg Matheson, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and Charlotte DJ, Director of Pupil Personnel and Diversity, to join us. Dr. Matheson, I think, will lead things off via video.
President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. Over the past two years, Parkway has engaged in gathering feedback from our families, students, staff, and community regarding equity. In 2019, we engaged in a targeted equity review in order to hear from our community. Through the feedback process, it was clear that our district, like many districts, has a lot to be proud of, but as well, several areas to work on. In June of 2020, my team reported the findings of the targeted review to the Board of Education. From that review, nine recommendations rose to the forefront of our work. Those recommendations covered items from our hiring, retention, and recruitment practices to professional development and learning for staff, students, and community, to building a voice for our students and building stronger relationships to ensure accountability. In fall of 2020, we created an Equity Task Force of over 60 people from all walks of life, vocations, and viewpoints. The Equity Task Force came together monthly to discuss, learn, and help drive our next steps in order to reach our vision for equity for all. I want to take a moment to thank our parents, students, staff members, civic leaders, police officers, clergy, and community leaders for their hard work, dedication, and focus on our kids. I also want to thank our Board of Education and our superintendent for supporting this essential work. essential work. And finally, I want to thank Dr. Charlotte E J for her relentless pursuit of equity for all. At this time, I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Charlotte E J as she will walk you through the work of our Equity Task Force and what our next steps will be as we continue our equity journey. Dr. E J?
Good evening, good evening. That was really good. I didn't expect, thank you. So thanks to Dr. Matheson for the introduction and, and introduction to the, to the actual presentation. But again, to the Board members and Vice President and President Todd, I just want to say thank you for just being so supportive of us because we've been working on this for a long, long time. So thank you so much for this. So just to give you a little history of the Equity Task Force, we're going to look at the targeted review. Greg just went through some of that, but there was a request to the Board of Education, that was in August of 2019, it seems like three years ago, but it wasn't. We surveyed parents, we surveyed teachers, administrators, and students, grades five through 12. The data indicated inequities within race, ethnicity, culture, religion, gender, discipline. Suspensions were really high among certain groups. Economic class, we had students who identified as LGBTQIA+. Students living with a disability, so inequities, and students who did not feel respected. Also, students who did not feel like they could trust anyone and did not have a sense of belonging. And this was across the board. Between, when we looked at the black students and not only just students, but parents and all of the groups that we surveyed, there was a difference between black students and white students, but also a difference between people of, the students of color and people of color and white students. So that, that is a concern and was a concern for us. So the report to the Board with key findings and nine recommendations was done, that was on June 2020, year 2020 in June. Okay. So the Equity Task Force, as Dr. Matheson talked about, we had 61 members from diverse backgrounds and was an exciting group of people, I can tell you that. School and district counselors were a part of it, social workers, principals, and assistant principals, parents, clergy. We had district administrators, Parkway Board of Education members, teachers, police, not only police officers, but chiefs of police as well, students, we had P N E A representatives, and also state and local elected officials, which made it even richer. So why such a diverse committee? I would be hoping that you would ask yourself that question. So everyone comes to the table with only their own lived experiences. It's all they have to bring. We always need different perspectives. That's another reason why we had a diverse committee. We didn't want a lot of people thinking the same way. So one of the things that Shirley Chisholm said when she was elected to Congress in 1972 was that if you, if they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. And so that's the reason why we wanted to make sure that everyone had a seat at the table so that they could bring information and voices to us that we would not necessarily have of our own. And so that happened and was very, very successful. We had to ensure a seat at the table for everyone so that we did not miss anyone's voice. We sometimes see through the lens of those who look like us, also are the same religion as us, or culture, or beliefs, or ethnicity. That would be an issue as well because we want others, like I said, to look, that are not like us, but more unlike us. So it's how we, each of us have grown up, how one of us grows, is how each one of us grows. We needed the voices of those who are not educators as well. We needed students and parents' voices and because of, and I use the word Ubuntu. Ubuntu means I am because you are, and you are because I am. We need each other. There is no such thing as a person on an island to themselves. We do know that the United States was founded on the principle that everyone should be able to pull themselves up by their own bootstraps. But we know, and we've been talking about this, a lot of people don't have boots to even pull, pull the straps up with. So we must meet each student where they are. It is not about being fair, giving everyone the same. That's not what it's about at all, but creating equity, giving everyone exactly what he or she needs. And that's the most important thing. So the nine recommendations, and I'm going to read through these as quickly as possible that we came up with, are to attract, employ, develop, and retain a diverse staff, administrators, and supervisors that mirror students in all departments, programs, and schools. Continue to develop the individual and organizational knowledge, attitude, skills, and practices to create culturally and linguistically responsive learning environments. Support and develop administrators to lead the equity initiatives in their buildings with the focus on ensuring all students cultures are, and student cultures are included. That's very important. Initiate mandatory professional development for all employees to increase their understanding of systemic and institutionalized racism along with all other oppressions, building, oppressions that cause inequities. Another recommendation, implement a system of accountability that will measure the progress of the equity initiatives at the district, building, and classroom levels. Revise curriculum so all students will be able to see themselves depicted accurately in classroom instruction and resources. Increase all teachers' knowledge of how to engage students in courageous conversations about racism and other oppressions. Invite and engage parents and community members of the, in the work of equity for all through additional, additional social justice cohorts and involvement in, in equity initiatives within their buildings. So we want families and community members to be involved in the work as well, and they have, they have been involved in it. We've had cohorts with, with the community members. Further engage students who are members of the district-wide Superintendent Social Justice Leadership Advisory Council, that's S S J L A C, that's been around for, ooh, a long time, and other equity, and other equity student groups in buildings to increase student learning acceptance, advocacy, courageous conversations, and student voice at all levels. So what we did when we met is the one thing that came up, we looked at what themes are we seeing that the large committee worked on and brought out? What, what are those themes? Where would those recommendations fit? And we came up with five of those in the small group setting. And those, the first one is recruit, hire, retain. That's recommendation number one. Develop and maintain a strategy for recruitment of teachers and staff of color. We know that that's where we're lacking. We have students of color, we have a lot of students of color, and we're lacking in that area, and so we're going to make sure that that happens. Develop strategy, strategies to retain a teacher, a teaching staff that reflects the student population based on student demographics. So also, we're going to develop a Grow Your Own program, encouraging students to become teachers. And I think that's important for us to think about because there, we do have students out there who want to become teachers, but no one really kind of talks to them about it, so they don't know about it. So we're just going to be more intentional about that. The second theme is professional development or professional learning, and the recommendations that fall under that theme would be recommendations number two, three, four, and seven of the ones that I just gave you. Define and communicate Parkway equity definitions to ensure understanding that we are having the same understanding across the district for every definition that we have. And what we have been using in all of these years has been from the National Conference of Christians and Jews. So we use their definitions from 1927. That's just how long they have been using those particular definitions, and they are tried and true. Now, there are some new definitions that are out, but these have worked for us for a long, long time. Building development was part of the professional development, leading equity development, administrator development, equity coaching skill development, and new administrators development, head principals defining roles and planning with equity from the start, from the very start. And also equity learning walks. We've done those before, equity learning walks, and they have been very, very successful. And with those learning walks, you have parents in the, on the committee, you'll have administrators on there, and teachers as well as coordinators of the work, and it has been very, very successful. So we're, we're really grateful for that. Our curriculum fell under the theme, recommendation number six fell under the theme for curriculum. Revise the entire Parkway curricula so that, so they will be able to see themselves depicted accurately in the classroom instruction and resources. That's extremely important. I think about Tulsa, Oklahoma, and the number of times I've heard that that's the first time anyone has ever heard about that, like Wall Street, and that's because it has not been in our curriculum. And there are a lot of things that have been left out of the curriculum, religious feasts and things of that sort as well. Relationships and community building, recommendations eight and nine, that's where they fall under that particular theme, recommendations eight and nine. Invite parents and community members to work, to, work for equity for all through social justice cohorts, equity initiatives, and building relationships within schools, the district, and the larger community. All Parkway community members, students and staff, parents, community members at large, contributions are valued for the growth and, and maintenance of Parkway. Our S S J L A C group of students from across the district will collaborate with peers and adults. So they're, they will be working with not only the buildings that they are in, but also they're going to share perspectives, learn, and listen to others' perspectives in the community as well as within their own school. Sometimes our kids only want to hear what they believe to be true as opposed to listening to everybody that needs to, that's saying something. It's very important, the voice is important. Engage the community, community through service learning and leadership projects which affect the community's validity. That is the, the one thing that we want to do. So our, in other words, our students will be working more with the community as well as with the building, the buildings as well. And the last theme that we had was accountability, and is that, that is the recommendation number five. The accountability recommendation follow action steps which should continuously be evaluated and modified to determine their effectiveness in impacting outcomes for students. We want there to be positive outcomes for students. The process of progress monitoring should be constantly utilized to identify, monitor, respond if there is a need for additional supports, interventions, resources, and things of that sort. And when we talk about this, we think about the question, what do we do to help teachers understand what they need to know to teach in an equitable way that allows us to reach Parkway's mission and vision for all our Parkway students and, and families? Accountability must be embedded in all recommendations if we are to reach the goal of equity for all. It's very, very important. Also, going back to the heart piece, we talked about the heart piece, and that, that is where we, we work on empathy and the flawed biases that we all have. We've learned from those who love, who love us. We know now that these biases that we all have don't intersect with empathy. We see that relationships are not necessarily being built, and students may not, may not be feeling as if they belong or even that they're accepted. It is impossible to build positive relationships without empathy. And that's why we continue to say we have to go back to the heart plate, the heart place where empathy is built. Dr. Ebron Kenday says, "As we unravel one of the biggest obstacles to an anti-racist future, the myth that as people of color gain, white people lose." Actually, it's not that way. As we dismantle racism, as we build a more equitable and just society, we all gain. So not only is accountability key to equity for all, it was, it will also ensure we stay on the journey towards equity for all, to being able to build positive, positive, sustainable relationships with all students and families, no matter their differences. So we have some, if you have questions, but I just wanted to give this last point. For our teachers who we want to have courageous conversation is not easy, and so we have to learn how to do that. It's very difficult. And one of the things that we would do in is training teachers to ask those courageous conversations. And Jane Bogatz says, "We foster our racial literacy precisely in those moments when we bump into disagreement and even antagonism." And that's in her book, Talking Race in the Classroom. And her, she says that you can use three prompts. So when students talk to you about something that's really, really, you think it's just really over your head or that you don't feel comfortable with, you can ask those questions. What do you mean? How do you know? And tell me more. So these prompts helps to foster courageous conversations about race, racism, and oppression of not only our students who live with, live with a disability, but students who are here to speaking that where English is not their first language, and any student that is different from quote unquote what we normally consider the norm or they fall outside of that particular place. So if you have any questions for me, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. E J. I know there was a lot of work that went into putting the report together and getting to a concise presentation for us, so thank you.
Thank you for being there.
Well, thank you for your leadership in the entire program.
Thank you, you too. Glad you were there.
I'm sure at times at the beginning, you wondered where it was going, like we all did.
Yeah.
But it really came to fruition and it's some outstanding recommendations.
Absolutely. We had an amazing team, amazing group. You guys were great.
Well, it was a pleasure to be part of it. But I, I want to emphasize the importance of relationships. You know, being a middle school principal for a lot of years, and one of the things I, I felt was so important in our school, not only educating in terms of the cognitive learning that students needed to learn, but just how people interacted with one another. And it started with the administration, it started with our faculty, and then it basically helped our students by realizing the importance of relationships and making everyone feel included, everyone feel belonging to whatever part of it they were part of. That's a critical part of it and, you know, so many, the recommendations are all great, but if we don't build the relationships and we don't have a situation where every teacher is helping every student to be feeling a part of and to be part of a group and to be valued and to feel good and to feel happy.
Yes.
A child that comes to school and feels happy and they look around and they have friendships, they have feelings that people care. It's a safe environment. It makes a difference. And if we're talking about, you know, growth and development academically, it has to start with feeling good about your school, feeling good about your peers, feeling good about your teachers and everyone involved, including families.
Absolutely.
So I, I'm really optimistic and I enjoyed being part of this committee because I really believe that we can accomplish a situation where there is equity for all and feel very, very good about it. And every child, every person involved in the school environment is, is there enjoying it and feeling, you know, accomplished and cared for, cared for, loved as well. So anyway.
Yeah.
I really, that was the emphasis for me as a principal. I always, you know, had the, the privilege of feeling that, you know, we needed to work on making sure every child was belonging to the school and feeling very good about it as well.
Yeah, and you know, when I bump into your students from a long time ago, that's what they say about you, that you built relationships. And I think that is so important, and that's why we talk about going back to the heart because that's where the empathy is. So if you teach, if you treat every child as if they were your own birthed child, we wouldn't have a problem, I think. So that's what we have to do.
You know, and we all come with different biases as well.
Absolutely.
But it's so important that our biases go beyond our own personal feelings and more importantly to what we're all about and why we're there as a teacher, an educator, a parent, even a child. a parent, even a child, realizing that, you know, I need to care about everybody.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So it's a matter of us teaching the kids, and I think kids got it down to pat. They're, they're ready to have these conversations.
Dr. EJ, you might remember early in the, in the planning, we presented the demographic information about Parkway. And because we had so many non-school people, I think a lot were surprised at truly how diverse our student population was, whether that's cultural, religious, you know, all the qualities that are qualifications you talked about. And I think, you know, one of the things that, as we were last summer thinking about this task force, and why I think we're really positioned well in a, in a world that's debating a lot about equity and how we should approach it, is that we've had such good community participation, and we've got community people that really, as you mentioned, and you've led some of those groups, are really excited about our ability to, as the school district to perhaps be the hub, but for others to engage in this, this, this work, this conversation, this better, as is mentioned, developing inclusion and belonging. So what I'm proud of is, is the fact that this report isn't just about the Parkway School District, it's about equality of life, I think, for our community at large. And as we get involved in the implementation, and since there are a lot of people in the room tonight, what we really want to do is build a coalition with our families and with the community, and, and really, this work really can be, I think, much more meaningful when we think about this in terms of our larger community. We all have so much to learn. I, I can't tell you how much I've learned every meeting, as was mentioned earlier, just from the group and from different perspectives, and I think we can really grow as a community. So I'm really excited. I sometimes compare this to our, our mental health task force, which I think has done some great work and now has produced some wonderful results. I think we have a great opportunity here to really, not just the school district, but the community to embrace this work.
Oh, absolutely. And, and, and I guess we can't, I can't not say this, but our community is probably a little bit further ahead than we are. They're doing book studies, they're, they're moving and getting together in groups and, and trying to figure things out. And you're right, biases, I'm still working on mine. I haven't arrived, I'd only agreed to go, so, so that's, you know, we're all going to make mistakes. But I'm excited about this. I'm so excited about it.
Charlotte, I'd just like to thank you and, and Dr. Matheson and your, your whole team that has worked so hard to put this all together, and, and the hours, I know it's, it's been, Dr. Marty talked about all the board meeting hours these, this last year, but the, the time that you all have spent working on this, I know, is immeasurable. And we really appreciate getting to this point. These nine recommendations, what is your anticipation for a timeline of, of their rollout?
Yeah, and we're going to start this fall with some of the, looking at cultures, different cultures, and how do you build relationships by understanding culture. But it'll be a three-year or so. I mean, it's not going to be right away, but it's going to be constant, constant. We didn't get this way overnight, and so it's going to take a while, because we all have to grow. So I would say at least we're going to be rolling it out with the next three years. Hopefully, we will have reached everyone, and we're going to be doing something every, every year. It's not like we're not going to be doing anything, but we, I don't expect to meet the full recommendations 100% for another, at least three years.
I think it's fair to say that the, the themes you developed was a way to rather than deal with all these nine, to kind of do some combining, for example, in the area of professional development. I think we can, we can kick off some work in every one of those theme areas.
Oh, yes.
For example, there'll be some work to really be initiated that in some cases already begun.
Yes, professional development, it's one. The curriculum, coordinators have already worked on the curriculum, and so yes, that work has already been done. And we've always had the social justice cohorts, so schools have, whole school social justice, that's all gone through. Schools are doing a lot of good work. Principals are doing great work. And I just want to thank you as a board that you guys have supported this work for so long, and I really do appreciate that. We couldn't do it without leadership from you guys, down to Dr. Marty, not down, but anyway. Well, yeah, but anyway, just, we need that collective collaboration. That's the only way we're going to be able to get, get through this. But I know that we will reach equity for all. I know that.
I would like to ask one question on revising the curriculum. What's the vision for who will be involved in doing that work?
Uh, Dr. Beckner?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't remove my mask for our interpreters. The question was, who will be involved in the effort to revise curriculum?
So anytime we revise curriculum, it's certainly an effort that involves a lot of stakeholders, including lots of teachers, teachers from different levels. Oftentimes, we do bring in feedback from community members or experts. In this envisioning, in Dr. EJ's group, they actually have a committee that's advising how we can go about do that, doing that, including equity walks in our classrooms, and really just going through our curriculum and, and looking for areas where there might be inequities that we can address. But we'll follow our board-approved curriculum revision process through all of that, which we mean bringing together stakeholders, bringing to the board, you know, changes to curriculum framework and pieces like that to ensure that we've got that, that work solid. And I know we also have work going on this summer, you might want to mention Dr. Holly this summer in that work as well.
Yeah, in August, we're having Dr. Shrocky Holly that's coming, and he's going to be looking at the cultural piece in terms of how do you build strong relationships, and that's understanding kids as they show up, you know, we accept them where they are and understanding their culture, understand linguistically, understanding what, what that looks like. And so he's going to be doing some cadres. In other words, some, there are like seven schools that we'll be going through at the very beginning, and there'll be training within that school, building a cadre of teachers who will be then teaching other groups, other teachers within the building. So seven will go through this year, this fall, well, actually in the spring. But he will come and talk to all of the administrators and teachers in August, August 18th and 19th, I think it is, or August, yeah. I think I was right. Yeah.
The concept of an equity walk has been mentioned several times in this presentation. Could we have some clarification on what an equity walk is and what role it plays in this process?
Yeah, an equity walk is, a school will call and, and say that we, I want you to come in and do an equity walk. And that is, do you walk around, you have a, we studied this for like two years, looking at what, what would it be like to have, so we got an equity tool, I don't have the name of the book in front of me, it's been a long time ago. But, but what we do is we involve parents on that committee, we have administrators, we have coordinators, of course, and counselors, social workers. And what we do is, we walk through, go into classrooms that teachers want us to come into. They want to know, am I reaching all kids? That's what they want to know. So they invite us in. We'll stay about 10 minutes in that class, maybe seven minutes, and collect some things. And we look at things that we're wondering, I wonder, and what I've noticed. And some of that will also be looking at walls, to see what's posted on the wall, and you have an extremely diverse group of students. I mean, do you have a stu, do you have a student with, in a wheelchair on your wall, for instance, or a difference, making a difference, looking, looking at kids who are different and not the same? And they want to know that. We look at the library, we look at the hallways, and then afterwards, we sit down and we just talk about it together. Like I was wondering, I noticed, so most, and it's good stuff, it's not necessarily is it bad, they want to learn. And so whatever it is, is we can tell them that, of course, this is some things that you can do if you wanted to change that, as opposed to, but it's, when I say equity walk, it's looking at everything that has to do with our students, who are, you know, first-generation students in Parkway, or English is not their first language, are African-American students who live in the city or, or the county, or, you know, just are kids who are gifted, who are what we call, you know, might have issues in terms of mental health issues and things of that sort. So every group that falls in a category, we look to see things like, are you reaching out to boys more in your classroom as opposed to girls? We see that.
So it's an informal qualitative assessment of the classroom?
Yes, and then we sit down together.
Okay.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
Or not a grade.
It was, it was just a term that I wasn't familiar with.
Yes, yes, I understand, yeah. So, yeah, so it's always been really good. We've been doing it now for about five years.
Dr. EJ, will special school district personnel be included in the equity walk and other revision of curriculum, et cetera?
We, we often have special school district people who, that will go with us on the walk throughout the buildings. So that's, that's a given, because we don't have that lens. I don't have that lens, you know, not really. And so we need people who have a lens for that, so they, they'll can, they'll do that, we'll be doing that. Parents as well, we bring parents in from outside, our parents. And they are with, and they, they notice a lot of things, a lot of great things, a lot of things that, you know, some notices, some wonderings. But, you know, normally, we've been invited in to do this work. It's not like we want to just come in and, I got you, it's not about that at all. Because our, Parkway's been doing this work for a long, long time, trying to make sure all of our students feel as if they belong, and that they feel like they're loved and welcomed, so. Not quite there yet, but we're getting there.
I had a question, going back to Debbie's question about the curriculum and, and who's involved in helping, and not specifically about curriculum, but I heard in your presentation, you mentioned mandatory training, mandatory professional development. In, in reading through some of the things in the professional development, you talk about data tracking, the number of conversations teachers are having about race, and I'm curious how we would do that. I assume you had teachers on the equity task force group. But are those, are those teachers, are PNEA supportive of this work, and are they, I assume they're expecting this kind of, this kind of development coming forward?
Well, they, as a matter of fact, the PNEA rep, president was on, on the board as well. So basically, when it says, helping teachers to ask those critical questions, it's so that our students don't feel as if they ask a question about something that they're wondering about when it comes to race and class and inequities and things of that sort, or whatever's going on, could be just something in, in the general, out, in, that's being discussed period. We want teachers to feel comfortable to do that, and some do not, some do not. I understand that. But what we will do is, we will do professional development to help them understand and learn how to get that conversation started. Because our students, they want to talk about it. They really want to talk about issues and differences and things of that sort.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a matter of helping teachers to formulate that, how do you do it? You don't have to, you know, you don't have to go yes or no, I feel this way, or you can't do that. But what you can do is that you can just lead the conversation, and that's what teachers will be doing.
Okay. Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time tonight. Next up, I'd like to bring Patty Bedborough, our CFO, back to the podium, along with Paul Tandy, our chief communications and emergency management officer, and Dr. Chelsea Watson, deputy superintendent. Talk about Facilities 2030.
I feel like you all should have a stretch break.
Good stretch.
Been sitting a long time.
Yes.
Shoulders a little bit. All right, good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, thank you for having us back here this evening. So tonight, our purpose is just to review the Facilities 2030 work in regards to school enrollment and attendance areas that we have previously discussed. As always, we start with our mission. Our mission is the foundation of our work each and every day, no matter what we do. And as I was sitting there during the meeting, thinking about our mission, you know, many years ago, our mission wasn't about students, our mission was about adults. And so we made a very intentional shift at the beginning of strategic planning process of Project Parkway, to shift our mission to be about students. And we have maintained that focus always, since we made that shift in, what, 2008, 2009? So keeping the mission at the forefront, always. So as you know, part of our ongoing Facilities 2030 work, we have been addressing school enrollment and attendance areas, and how they impact education and experiences here in Parkway. And so as we embark on looking at our, our problem area here, it is not the first opportunity in time that we have had to, you know, dig into school enrollment and attendance areas. And so as we have in the years past, just as a reminder, we keep some key pieces at the forefront of our mind when going through the process. One, we have to comply with the Board of Educational Policy and Guidelines that you have set forth for us. Second, our goal is to work toward our Parkway mission. Third, we also are responsible for strategic, our strategic plan, and Patty, you know, really focused on goal three as with her report today, but we also have two other goals that we have to focus on. And fourth, providing the best educational opportunities for our students. And so we find ourselves in this particular situation once again, based on enrollment at West Middle. In previous meetings, we've shared some details, we're not going to share all of those details again, but again, the purpose is just to give you an update and, and recap as to where we are, a little bit of a status update. So the problem, again, West Middle, student population, and we've shared the potential solution with you previously, and so that slide is just a repeat. And I mentioned earlier that our Board of Education Guidelines are part of, are one aspect of what we look at on an ongoing basis in decisions like these. And so Paul Tandy's going to come forward, and he's just going to review those guidelines, so we're all on the same page there.
Well, thank you, Dr. Watson, and good evening, everyone. It was suggested that we go over these again. We've, we have reviewed them before, but we wanted to make sure we did keep them in mind because they do guide our work and our decision-making whenever we're looking at establishing or making recommended adjustments to attendance boundary lines. So I don't like to read slides, but I'm going to quickly run through them with you. And as a reminder, one of our main guidelines is to support the neighborhood school concept, to try to keep kids to attend the school nearest their home as best as you can, as long as that, that school can accommodate that student. To favor students who are presently enrolled over prospective new students, so that's when you establish phase-in periods for recommendations, so you try to minimize the impact on students currently enrolled. Obviously, you want to avoid a one-year or a short-term fix, and it's difficult with enrollment projections, but we try to at least go for five years out with our enrollment projections and have a recommendation at least, at least that lasts that long. Safety is always a factor, and making sure we try to establish boundary lines that make sense from a safety standpoint. That comes into play a lot of times when you're making minor adjustments in neighborhoods and things like that, but we also want to look at that. Next slide, please. This one's particularly relevant here, to equalize the number of students in each building as nearly as possible according to their capacity. And as you recall, we have two middle schools in the south area, the only area that has two middle schools that have significant capacity, whereas we have one, the one middle school in the west area, which is tight and overcrowded. To assign when practical all students of a subdivision to one school, that really doesn't come into play here, but we have had that in recent years, where we've had to look at individual subdivisions based on the need. We are fortunate in Parkway that typically, we've been able to coordinate attendance areas for elementary and secondary schools in terms of the feeder patterns. We have a few places where we don't currently do that, and that's the one area of this particular proposal that would, you know, not be ideal. And then finally, to allow as many students as possible to remain in schools they're now attending, so obviously move as few as number of students possible that you need to do in order to accomplish your objectives. Don't, don't move more than Don't move more than you absolutely have to. And I think I'll turn it back over to Dr. Watson.
Thank you. So, through our Facilities 2030 work, always, we go about getting community input when we are talking about attendance areas and boundaries. And as we have in the past, we have done so in this particular situation. We've actually had two opportunities for community input webinars where, in our last Facilities 2030 plan, we did not have two opportunities. We had one a couple of years ago. And so, an additional aspect to this, we have a link for questions and comments. Our communications department monitors those questions on an ongoing basis. And as some specific questions come in that aren't, that are, you know, really specific to maybe one family, or somebody has a really, a clarifying question, we respond via email or I've picked up the phone a couple of times because many times the questions are such that an email might not best explain what needs to be explained in a conversation is best. So, we continue to monitor that, in addition, posting questions and themes on the website, and that will continue throughout into summer months. Previous topics addressed, I am not going to read this slide to you, but just, these are the topics that we have talked about in the previous board meetings and/or in the webinars. And so, you can see them. I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. And so, based on community feedback, we went ahead at the last webinar and talked about the high school pattern that would occur is, you know, as you remember, you know, we did not begin with talking about high school because this is not a high school concern. It was a middle school concern. But based on feedback, Dr. Marty did share the high school path would continue to be West Middle, if, I'm sorry, West High, if indeed, we move forward with the current proposal. The other piece that I want to mention is Mosaics Academy. And so, when we first brought the proposal to you, the thought was that the Mosaics Academy would remain at West Middle. But after that first webinar, we had lots of input, lots of emails and topics coming through on the website and calls. And so, we looked at that again. And so, that second webinar, we shared that Mosaics would indeed move to South Middle School. So, there's one piece that we are still problem-solving right now. And so, as we think about if and when this transition occurs, we know that we will have students currently in the Mosaics Academy at West Middle. And so, Dr. Beckner and his team have been working with the teachers, and we are still looking at a number of different possibilities because we certainly do not want kids shifting from one middle school to another middle school during their middle school years. And so, we are problem-solving that and will work on the best approach to meet student needs and to have a seamless, if at all possible, experience for kids who are in the Mosaics Academy. So, we're still problem-solving that. During webinars, we also addressed, that second webinar and the first one, some community feedback themes. And so, just to highlight a couple of those themes that we talked about, one of them was moving special programs out of West Middle, another was building on to West Middle, or, you know, adding pods or trailers. Another theme that we discussed at a webinar was using South Middle as a sixth-grade center because that was a theme that continued to come in through the website. And then, another piece that we talked about was shifting where kids at Highcroft and Mason go to middle school because both of those schools have areas where kids go to West and to Central. So, those are just some of the themes that we addressed based on the community feedback. So, again, don't want to go through all of those. I'm sure you probably have heard them, but wanted to highlight a couple. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Patty because there's another theme that has been, has bubbled up, and Patty's going to address that, and that's transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. It's me again. So, themes have bubbled up dealing with transportation, and one is, will the number of routes increase with this plan? So, as Dr. Watson has explained, we will have a few years of transition. We will also have a few years where if you currently have a student that is attending West Middle, or if you're a Hannah parent and have one at South Middle, you can request that your student then, your current fourth grader, which then, of course, in that year will be your entering sixth grader, could then have that special assignment to either West Middle or South Middle, if you're a Hannah Woods student. With that, and having the new transition of the one grade level going to the new middle school, i.e. South Middle and Southwest Middle, will that cause an increase in routes? And potentially, yes. You know, minimally, we can easily say it will cause more students to ride the bus, potentially. We know that there's 80 students about in each of the schools in their current fourth grade. So, that would be the students that would be entering sixth grade. So, not knowing how many will request a special assignment and go on existing bus routes and how many new routes we will have to do, what we do know is most likely at this time, it would only add a maximum of two routes at each school. So, that's not a full tier of all three tiers, but just that one middle route. Of course, these then would reduce once the phase-in is completed. So, that leads into that next question is, will this plan save money for the district as far as transportation goes? And yes, once this is fully phased in, the students that are going from Piermont and bus to South Middle and the students that are going to Hannah Woods and attending Southwest Middle that are riding on bus, in theory, will ride for less miles. So, we'll have less miles, less gas, and less labor needed in order to transport the children. Of course, this is safer too because it is shorter routes to school. Would it reduce the amount of time that it would take for the students to be picked up from home and arrive at school? Yes, it would because you have a shorter distance to travel. And traveling to the neighborhood schools would potentially reduce the number of total students riding the bus as well because you will have potentially more students than in the walk zone than we currently have. So, at this time, I do want to thank you for your time and everything else that you have put into listening to all of us with this. And for considering, we are continually to, sorry, we are continually working on fielding questions. As Dr. Watson mentioned, our community, our, sorry, our communications department is monitoring the questions that come in. We're receiving emails as they come in and responding to them as we see, as we receive them. We do plan to follow up with you once again in the fall. And our purpose tonight was to review where we are and bring everyone up to speed on where we are in the process. As a reminder to the high schools, we have already decided that that feeder pattern is not changing. But thank you very much for your time, and do you have any questions for us?
I'll start. Thank you, first of all, to all three of you for presenting the additional information. I know, first, I want to mention that, and this is Matt's idea, so I'm going to give him credit, but several of us are planning, or had asked before the end of the school year to visit West Middle and South Middle and Southwest Middle, just to see with our own eyes, you know, what is the overcrowding we're talking about? What is the extra space? What is the disparity between the numbers of students? And so, I think it's a great idea, and it was recommended at the time, the idea came out was, you know, that's great, it's a good idea to see, however, our students are not the full capacity since we had so many of them virtual. So, that is something that we are planning doing the very beginning of the school year. So, I would, I would bet the first few days, we'll make it a point to be in those buildings when there's passing periods, at lunchtime, so we can really get a good idea of what's going on. You mentioned the transportation, and eventually, once the phase-in would be completed, we would potentially see a reduction of labor costs, transportation costs, time on the buses. Do we have any estimate of those numbers, any percentages?
No, we do not. At this time, the routes haven't been developed, so we don't have enough data in order to, you know, come to a conclusion on that.
Okay. Is that something that we could get in the next month or two, just a rough guess as to, you know, what this could potentially be saving the district in the long run?
I certainly can work with our Director of Transportation and see if that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of the citizen statements and other, a lot of the comments have been directed towards the capacity issue, and I feel like I've heard the number 1,500 is the West capacity. Can you talk about what the actual capacity of the West Middle School is, or how we evaluate or how we determine what the capacity is of that school and really of all of our schools?
Sure. So, one report that has been referenced is the CAFR report, which is a capacity report that is included in our comprehensive financial report. And that report is more based on square footage and rooms within the school and then taking an average class size and putting into there. So, it's more of a fire code capacity and not necessarily what is conducive to quality education. So, as we know, we have various class sizes in any school. So, we could have very small rooms, perhaps the Mosaics Academy, perhaps ones for special services for our students that have IEPs, et cetera, that need intervention services. And then, we have great big, large rooms that encompass our band classes and everything else. So, many things get, you know, put into what is needed. My experience, I'll just say for West High, walking through, I know, I haven't walked thoroughly through West High this year, or West Middle this year, but I believe it's two years ago, they made their own space out of a hallway, blocking off cabinets in order to have an advanced math class there. And it was right outside the American Sign Language class, which was a very small classroom there. So, they were making room for every nook, you know, taking up every nook and corner in order to have instructional space for our students. So, to me, that gives that whole impression of overcrowding. The hallways at West Middle are also not nearly as wide as the hallways at here, South Middle or at Southwest Middle. One thing that I guess Southwest Middle, there's a benefit of too, is the ceilings are much higher and there's outside light that comes in from the ceiling. So, in general, it gives you a feeling of more room in such there too. But if we really look at capacity, we need to look at the total enrollment at each of our schools and knowing that we have a rather large middle school, Southwest Middle, that is underutilized. It's going to have about 600 students, by 50 or 600, I don't remember that exact number, and it has capacity to hold more. The school here has about the capacity that it can handle comfortably, so it doesn't make sense to move one school into here, that would make it overcrowded. So, it made sense when we were looking at everything to look at the possibility of moving another neighborhood school close to another middle school that's right in its backyard and then being able to transition Piermont and move it into South Middle because it is so close by. So, I don't know if I answered the part of, okay.
Can I ask, I'll tag on to that, but one of our policies, it's jcb.bp, talks about class size and what the targets are to what the maximum should be. And in grades six through eight, our target is between, is 23 students per class and the maximum is 26. Are we seeing West Middle School exceeding what even these maximums are on class sizes for our core, I would say our core curriculum courses in particular. I know like art and music, et cetera, may go above that in PE classes. But our main core courses, do we see that we are exceeding our class sizes over the maximums per our policy?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Boggs. I don't have that particular data. The data that we were provided kind of did an overall student-staff ratio, but I don't know that we have that data with us.
Can we, at some point, could we get that information? I think that could be helpful.
But certainly, we abide by our board policy. And so, if indeed, you know, we see those enrollment numbers creeping up, our Human Resources Department is working with our building principals and determining whether or not another section needs to be open, or if a part-time, middle school, if a part-time teacher needs to be hired, or if we need to share a teacher and do, you know, a point two at one school and a point eight at another school because the schedule may not be necessarily full at one school. So, there, there are things that we do so we don't get too above that maximum, and we like to not even approach that maximum, if at all possible, in Parkway, but we can certainly get those numbers for you.
Okay.
Is it correct, though, if I'm hearing it right, that sometimes, I'm sorry, that sometimes what happens is we might hit that number, so we need to create another section of a class, and we don't have a room. So, we're having to make, we're having to create like a makeshift space to be the place where that class would be in order to have the right student-to-teacher ratio.
I think the other thing, yes.
Okay. And we see that on the tour that Jeff referenced.
Yes. You can't, depending on what the schedule looks like and what courses kids select. And so, you know, it does depend on the electives that kids select. That impacts, you know, class size, where the room can be, how many rooms you need, and so forth. The other thing I wanted to, I thought about when Patty was talking, was depending on students and their needs will depend on the number of interventionists a school might have in any given year. Will depend on the number of sections that a special educator might need to teach and what that class composition looks like and how many classrooms are being utilized because of needs of individual kids. And so, we don't just take a number of students and divide that students by the number of classrooms that we have to put kids in classes. We are looking at the students we have, the needs that they have, and getting classrooms and staff to accommodate those needs. So, you might walk through a building and you'll see a class of 23 kids, and then you'll go to the next class and there might be three. And that is intentional because of the way the schedule is designed and meeting the needs of the kids in the building.
So, what I'm hearing here is that capacity is not a mathematical number, that it's a matter of what spaces the school has to utilize. I'm going to draw on my personal knowledge here because I have a son at West Middle who is in band. The band had to use the cafeteria this year for some classes because there were too many students. And I'm bringing in my personal experience, but I'm presenting a fact here. And these are the kind of issues that I think we're seeing where it's not, take this number, divide it by this number, this is what the capacity is. It's a matter of the space utilization that's available. And that's one example I've seen. The example of setting up walls to create what Patty was referring to. I think that the more specifics that people know about, the rigging that's being done to the building to make it work for students, it's important. But I hope that what I said was accurate regarding the band, but that's what I heard.
I believe that is what Dr. Miller shared with me as well.
Yeah.
And this year, before the kids came back, we had to purchase, West Middle purchased additional tables and chairs because all of the students could not eat their
additional tables and chairs because all of the students could not eat their lunch in the cafeteria this year. And so their smaller gym was turned into a cafeteria for most of, you know, for, during the lunch shift and set up and, and break down. But yeah, I went into the gym and it was a cafeteria this year, and so we could not seat all of the kids safely in that space. Now, at Southwest Middle School, there, there wasn't that issue this year.
Can I, can I just make, make a comment on that? My understanding is that that was to keep the six, the three to six feet distance because of COVID.
Correct.
Now, before that, all of the students were sitting in the cafeteria.
Correct.
But this was an accommo, a temporary accommodation made during COVID-19.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Well, let's just be clear about that. We're not, we're not doing that in the cafeteria in the band because it's a permanent solution. This is just a temporary situation because of COVID, right?
I can't answer that with band. I don't know the answer to that. Yes for the cafeteria. So I was just making the comparison that West Middle had to do that.
I have a child at West Middle also, and she's one of them that got into the middle, into the other gym and sitting at a concrete wall eating lunch. So, you know, it's, it was, it's meant to be temporary.
Right.
My understanding is that this is a temporary situation, just like a lot of, and when we talked about this issue of trying to social distance during COVID, West Middle came up as being a very difficult school to social distance in because of some of the constraints that were already existing. So I, I guess I want to throw a little bit of caution, are we really looking at this because this is a true situation permanently or because we're dealing with some issues related to COVID because we're trying to social distance the kids and we're taking a temporary situation and trying to convert it into a permanent solution?
So two things. My, my point of sharing this particular year at West Middle was just to say, West Middle had to do this, this particular year, but for example, Southwest Middle did not have to do that this particular year, meaning move kids out of their cafeteria to another location. So I was specifically talking about this year with COVID with the changes, one school had to turn their gym into a cafeteria, another school due to population did not. The second point is we, we have been talking about the attendance and the numbers at West Middle for a number of years as we have looked at Facilities 2030. So this is not anything that bubbled up due to the, the global pandemic.
I could just tack, tack on to what Debbie asked or clarified about lunch. Somebody, I don't know if it was you or Patty or somebody in previous presentation talked about lunch and the fact that lunch is crowded and even, even before the pandemic. Having been the PTO president at West Middle for a number of years, I spent a lot of time in the lunchroom, sometimes against my will, but, but I was there and it was crowded. So I would be interested to know how the space, the physical space of West Middle's cafeteria compares to here, South Middle and Southwest Middle. I know you won't have that information tonight, but if we could get that at some future time to get a better understanding of, of the space confinement in those, in that specific area.
Okeydokey. Got it.
While we're giving you homework assignments, have we talked to the teachers at West Middle? I think, I'd be really interested to know what teachers have to say, you know, they're the ones, you know, living with this, in this environment, just in, you know, their feedback on the, is it crowded, is it overcrowded, what, how, what they think about the situation? Is that something we've already done or something we can do?
That, that is not something that I've done, that is Dr. Miller's, you know, Dr. Miller's leadership works with her teachers and I, she, she shared a little bit of that in the presentation, but have, has she done a formal, you know, survey to seek feedback? I don't know. She hasn't shared that with me. I can certainly follow up with her to ask her what that conversation has looked like with her staff.
Okay. I just think it might be helpful, you know, there's people here, there's people, none of us, the one thing we all have in common is none of us are teachers or students at Parkway West Middle, unless there's a teacher or student here, but, okay, well, somebody is, but for the most part, we're not. So I, any sort of glimpse we could get into the school could help us to understand, A, you know, what the problem is, what the situation is, and B, how we can help.
I will talk to Dr. Miller.
Another question I have is since this is part of Facilities 2030, at one point, my understanding was that some of the schools, including West High, have even been talking about eliminating lockers or reducing the number of lockers because some students just aren't using them. And how could, could, is that something that's even been looked at as to, you know, does it make sense to have, you know, single-use lockers throughout our high schools or even the middle school? Because kids don't even double up anymore with, with lockers, everybody has their own locker. And there, there are too many lockers. I mean, when you go through West Middle and you see this huge bank of, of lockers, and that's what's kind of crushing some of that hallway space of would you, could you not, you know, get rid of some of the lockers? Because some students don't, they're not even using them. And then my other question has to do is with the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Special Program, is that, where are we at with that at West Middle also? And I don't recall what numbers of students that we have, I just remember that West Middle was identified as being the location where that should occur, and is that still the school of choice and does that still make sense?
As of right now, we have not proposed to move that program. I think, I want to say when I shared those numbers, 40, 35, 40 students right now, based on getting the numbers from Dr. Miller for the Deaf Heart of Hearing Program. And so as you know, Parkway is a site for the Deaf Heart of Hearing Program for students around St. Louis County, Belle Reve Elementary School, West Middle, and then West High is how we support that program here in Parkway. To your point with lockers, I have not had conversations with the high schools about removing lockers. Dr. Miller removed lockers, what, how many years ago, Mrs. Bedborough, do you remember?
Six.
Six? Six years ago to make space for a classroom or two? So West Middle has removed lockers at one point in time. I have not had a conversation with Dr. Miller about reducing any lockers to see if it would provide space for additional classrooms.
Wasn't that from a locker room?
I thought it was a locker bay.
It was a locker bay.
It was a locker bay in the hallway.
It was four or five years ago, wasn't it?
Four or five.
Would that, could that be something that we could perhaps engage in conversation about and see if that could help alleviate some problems or, or issues?
We can certainly, I will certainly check with her and maybe Facilities would have to look at that. I'm not quite sure that I could eye what lockers to remove and what walls we can build up, but certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next up...
Thank you.
We go home. All righty. No, no work session, no special meeting. The next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, August 11th. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. We have no closed session to go into at this point, so may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for attending, thank you for watching, have an enjoyable summer.